You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Hello, everyone. It is January 7th, 2025. Yeah, 2025.
Good job.
We have a motion to, um, a public meeting order and accept the agenda.
To who? Second?
Uh, move from this Conley, second by Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. A whisper of that?
No, I didn't. On this side.
Um. All right. Are there, I don't, there's no walk-ins here. I don't see any walk-ins online. No, so we'll go with the report of the town administration.
Are you gonna read your statement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, forgot.
Sorry. New year, hello.
Uh, the Senate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of prospective meetings. Call members to direct in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. By the participation of our community, while all participants who marginalize and minoritize communities to feel welcome and respected, we ask our committee members and everyone who participates to fit these standards, support and respect the local community. Now, that's.
Evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, we're gonna start off with, uh, with the cold weather coming. We want to give people a warning that they should avoid the ice at the old open bucket reservoir. Uh, this summer, we installed air raiders in the pond to help with the water quality. They will impact the thickness of the ice. They'll keep the ice very thin, so uh, we ask that you stay off the reservoir pond down next to the old open bucket. Uh, we have put up a message board and reported some more signs that we'll put up down there, but, uh, the, the air raiders do a great job helping with the water quality, but they will impact the thickness of the ice, so we ask that you stay off the ice. Uh, we just want to make people aware, if you've been watching the news, that we are tracking a potential storm this weekend, Saturday. Two main forecasting models right now, the American model and European model are at odds. The European model shows a storm going south. We did nothing. The American model shows it coming up the coast and really developing into a classic northeastern situat, which could be up to a foot of snow. So please keep an eye on that. If you don't, uh, if you haven't subscribed to Town Updates, please do so. Storm looks like it's coming this way. We will start putting out updates to let people know what we're expecting, what's coming. Tides are okay, upgrade 10, 10, 4 on Saturday. So a little bit of that on the way, so we'll keep an eye on that, let people know. Uh, if the American model starts putting out over the next day, yes. Water treatment plant, uh, not a lot going on, still site prep and construction of the foundation. Uh, we are scheduling, scheduling the salt to commit for next meeting. Uh, to give the board another update where we are, we'll actually be starting towards the next phase of that. The last two weeks have been quite a while. Uh, South Shore Vote Tech, we want to remind people the election for the new South Shore Vote Tech project is on Saturday, January 25th. Excuse me, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Voting was in the high school gym. The Select Board and Device Committee have both voted in favor of the project. If you go to the town website, a red banner across the top, you click on that and I can take you information about the project, or you can go to southshoretechproject.com and they have all the project information up. Deadline to register to vote is January 15th by 5:00 o'clock. Clerk's office are online at registeredtovoteMA.com. There is no early voting for this election, but people will be able to vote absentee or request a mail-in ballot. Absentee vote by mail ballots are now available in the clerk's office. Any registered to the town can vote an absentee ballot in the clerk's office if they are unable to vote a person on election day. If you wish a mail-in ballot, you need to get into the town clerk's office or go online to her page and fill out the form. We just have time for that. He's getting short. We want to congratulate Nancy in the Finance Department for the annual comprehensive popular annual financial report. This is a report that we take, takes the town's capital, the big giant financial report. There's a concise summation of financial data which we most interest citizens towns in easy to read format that's available online. It's available here, the public library and the senior staff, so that's a quick and easy way to kind of get up to date on the town's finances. The design of the North Situate, permitting of the North Situate soil has started. The, uh, efforts will start today. The project area is bounded by Blueville Road, Countryway in the south, South Main Street, Countryway, and Mordecai Lake in the north. And the MB taking more rail tracks to the west, and Gannon Road prior to Village Lane to the east. We're starting the field investigations this week. Uh, land survey activities will be completed by the town's consultant, civil design consultant, too. Again, they started today and expect to go till the end of the month. Land surveys managed at the front to jump some properties in the project area, like building sill elevations necessary for the proper design of the sewer system. We'll also be doing land surveys, field technical investigations, resource area delineations in the project area. Survey work began today in the Gannon Road, Countryway, and will progress northward. We'll continue to give periodic updates on what's going on in that project as we progress. Uh, as I announced yesterday, after discussion with the Situate Historic Society, Lieutenant Keeper of the Lighthouse, Bob Gallagher, and our project consultants, it was decided based on their recommendations that a standalone flag pole we erected in the yard of the lighthouse keeper's house instead of going back up on the lantern room. That flag is now up, which great, I think I sent the board pictures yesterday. Uh, reasons for this, first and foremost, according to the Historic Society, the flag flying from the lighthouse railing is a relatively recent addition and therefore is not historically accurate in the lighthouse. Flag was added when repairs were made to the railings in the 1990s. Now replacing the flag on the railings restores the historic access to the project. Secondly, the previous flag and pole required constant maintenance and repairs. After some different windstorm events, repairs were required on the railing on the flag pole itself. In addition, their work concerns the flag and pole was a hazard to people who might be below if it did come loose in a storm event. Three, the flaggers are extremely difficult for the lighthouse keeper to access and maintain, requiring multiple trips to the lantern room and problem at the access. Uh, if you've been up there, it's not easy to get up there. So, uh, despite what people think, it is a hard task. We moved the pole, we do so as a chance to people get injured at the lighthouse by doing that. Finally, with the easy accessible flag pole, we can comply with state federal directives to have staff notices. We can also take the flag down in case of storm events, which we'll be doing in the future. As a side, people might notice that the big flag at the stadium field, we've taken that down. Uh, if you remember a couple of years ago, flying the flag all winter actually broke the pole because it's so big, it puts so much tension on the pole. So I spoke to the superintendent and we made a decision, we'll take that down for the winter since the field's not being used. Situate Historic Preservation Plan and the Situate Historic Society Association Community Workshop on Wednesday, January 29th, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Situate Town Library. Join us to discuss Situate's historic resources and approach to historic preservation. Commissioners preparing historic preservation plan to guide historic preservation throughout the town. Plan will address our Situate's historic buildings and landscape, strengthen our identity, character, and quality of life. At the workshop, we'll get an overview of the planning process, a summary of what we went to date. Most importantly, we wish people to participate in a discussion about the priorities and opportunities, community character, community development, education, and stewardship of our historic cultural assets. The goal is to create a plan that is customized to Situate's interests and conditions. It can be implemented cooperatively by a variety of local stakeholders.
At 6:30 to 8:30?
6:30 to 8:30 on January 29th. Uh, Chief Thompson's here, the Situate Police Department Association Community Police Academy. Program provides an inside look at law enforcement, public safety, and the departments who are all serving to protect the Situate. Classes we held on Monday evenings from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM from February 3rd through April 7th at the Emergency Operations Center, Situate Public Safety Building. Seating is limited, registration closes January 21st. For more information, you can go to the Situate Police Facebook page, uh, email LBSimone@situateMA.gov. Finally, the food pantry has a new list of, uh, most requested items. Jus' spaghetti sauce, applesauce, decaf brown and decaf instant coffee, microwave popcorn, low sugar cereal, shell-stable apple juice, cranberry fruit punch, native mushroom soup, canned hash, spam. Out of question sweeteners also on the list. These can be dropped off. Food pantry during operating hours, bins behind the old gates, Situate Library, Village Market, all shots. That's what I have for tonight.
Question?
Um, the board, thank you so much. The board was, uh, we need to wear a bunch of promotions of our employees this week, well, recently. And I just wanted to commend them all and also to thank Bob Carter, HR director for one, keeping us informed, but two, doing such a great job, um, nurturing our staff and their professional development.
Yeah, Jim, without getting into detail on this, on the issue of the vote for South Shore Vote Tech, um, you know, it's gonna be tough to get a good turnout. It's the time of year, the stuff, it's also, I don't, I'm not sure if people understand exactly how it's supposed to work. Is it the, uh, a majority, six, seven, eight, ten, who have the vote? Yes?
No, it's a majority of votes cast across the district.
Okay.
Fifty, fifty percent, plus a lot.
So it's possible, since you would have a really good turnout, that could have a very beneficial effect.
Yeah. Have a, whichever way Situate decided to vote, it would have a large impact.
Okay. Um, I think that's the message I'd like to get out to people, that this is not just a, who cares? This is really important and the South Shore Vote Tech, I know it's been discussed while I was away, um, is a really valuable resource and they have not, uh, been in the NSB program for as long as I know, um, and they can really use it and, uh, it's given benefit to us. So I just want people to understand that this is not a doesn't matter vote. This is, it matters. Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Hello, sir. I haven't had a step away while you were talking. Did we mention the public hearing this week for the, um, proposed change, uh, changes to the zoning bylaw? That's.
No, I know, we just talked about that in the office.
Yeah.
We're gonna put out, uh, a notice, large, reminding people, they will, we, uh, Thursday night, you know, a public meeting to discuss zoning, whether it's successfully dwelling in it to bring the town looking fine to the state statute.
What time is that at?
Saturday, no?
Um.
Six thirty PM.
Six thirty.
Where?
Here.
It's here.
It's here.
It's, it takes place at the regular planning meetings, so there, I can understand that.
And there's a couple of public hearings, but the one that's posted on the zoning bylaws is 6:30 PM. This is the first thing.
All right, first scheduled item, uh, acceptance of a donation.
Dean?
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
So this is Greg Rocco's making a, uh?
Yeah, we received a donation, an amount of $107, and that proceeds from a raffle of the gingerbread house, which is, um, which they had a display in the window there. And, uh, that money is being donated to, uh, by apartment. Um, Citizens Emergency Response Team, also known as SERC Team, and, um, which, you know, we're, again, we've, I, I talked a little bit about in my budget presentation, we're really gonna, um, try to continue to, we've, we've got some people, we've got to engage now, and we're, we're involving them in more, more, uh, town events. And, um, they will hope, we're hoping to train them to play a vital role in emergency management. In the event of, you know, we can utilize them for shelter and even, you know, assistance in the EOC. Um, and they're mostly funded by grant, grant funding, so any, any other money for that is, is, uh, welcomed. Thank you to Rocco's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with questions.
It's great, like a little shave a few dollars off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Frank.
We just got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you have a good, good gingerbread house that everyone likes to see.
So this was Sal, like Lee Sal, who is related to Frank, I believe, who are in law, and, um, so that will.
Sal says he does.
If they want to do, yeah, if they want to do a.
We know it's bad.
Yeah.
All right. Give it one of those nights. I love it. All right, who has a motion?
Move to accept a donation of $107 to Rocco's Barber Shop, the Situate Fire and Fire Community Emergency Response Team Program.
Team Delta, five.
That's our gratitude.
Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna stay right here. For the next day.
Well, yeah.
Double check.
All right. Come on up.
Do you think?
Moral plaque for Jamie McCarthy, Public Safety and Emergency Communication Senator. Right. What's about?
Thank you. Well, appreciate you, uh, being here tonight. Um, as I think many of you know, Jimmy McCarthy was a dispatcher with us for 12 years. Um, lifelong Situate kid, grew up in town, um, and really made a huge impression upon apartment and public safety. Uh, and unfortunately, he passed away out there, two-year courageous battle with cancer. Um, but really, if you look at somebody who dedicated himself to the department, uh, to coming in and just being part of public safety, he fought through it all and he was, I think, kind of his happiest times when he had really been dispatching and, and helping and kind of being part of police and fire, so, um, a number of, of the, uh, officers and staff and firefighters and dispatchers kind of brought it up. Like, they really wanted to do something and be able to remember him. So the, the dispatch center, the Emergency Communications Center is, uh, is a basically, it's a private area in terms of it's not a public space. It's, uh, just employees only in that area, uh, but we really wanted to do something to be able to memorialize Jimmy and, uh, and remember his, for all the hard work, uh, hours he spent, the things he, he did put beauty. But he had the ownership, put together a plaque, uh, dedicate that particular space where it's open 24 hours a day and there's such good work that's going on there. Um, that Jimmy did for us, uh, over the years.
Excellent. Um, and just, so folks know too, this is, I know we have not finalized a naming policy at large, but, um, again, as to point out, this is a little different because it's.
It's not public space.
It's not like public space, public, right, it's 30, 40 years ago, and so it's a little different. Um, sky, questions, concerns, comments?
I think there's, I think there's nothing better we can do than listen to our town dedicated loyal employees. And if you, your teams think that this should happen in that office communication area, I mean, 90 to 100%, we cannot thank loyalty, dedication. And we just have to continue to do that, just a constant dedication, so I appreciate it, so please give that my vote. Easy enough.
Best questions, concerns?
No, I just want to thank you for getting this organized and such a good, good, God, we're inspired to.
True, truly, a true gentleman, just a good person, um, but it's Mr. Bill Morris, that's who, I mean, just absolutely dedicated to public safety. Uh, we, yeah, we miss him every day, um, the tribute to his, the turnout for his juniors, it's, it says it all. Um, we. Yeah, you, uh, did a, yeah, that's a job, you legit.
Just as an employee, this, you know, Mark and I, this has got, like, well, this is, this is a no-brainer, this, this is so many, it wasn't a lot. And, uh, even before we combined the dispatcher, I think, I was, years ago, I take a shift and I hear his voice, I go, hey, we're, we're in good shape, he's not gonna, you know, whatever gets thrown at us, he's gonna handle it. Um, you know, we'll, you know, we'll support whatever he needs and, and he was just, um, and after, I, I have to look back at the night of the fire in mine. Um, somewhere in the twenties to thirties of 91 calls, and we had a woman who's very upset and, uh, thinking that we probably want to buy a truck, looking that again up, and he was very calming, well, you know, the light can hear in the background, the radios and, and phone ringing up, all, Jimmy, make sure every 911 call was answered and, and, and reassure them that, um, honey and help was coming. Uh, you know, we gotta take care of it and, uh, just, uh, you know, I, I've got 100 more stories of, of what he did. So it's just, this one was a very easy decision for us to make.
And our, so, his family, to, to his friends, to his colleagues.
Yeah.
Your motion?
Move the Select Board to approve the dedication of the Situate Public Safety Emergency Communications Center in honor of James "Jimmy" McCarthy.
One more second, uh, just can't deal, all those in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate it, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We leave him at a defensive position, let's install.
All right, Peter Dillon. A little early.
You.
For now. All right, so we're gonna have a, a question, I know, I'm good to fix it. Oh, man, Kevin, that's why I, everything.
No, not completely done. Can you hear me okay? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I was hired, I've got Peter Dillon, I'm a, a professional geologist, I've been in South Shore for a long time. Um, I, I currently work with Sherin Norwell. Um, and, um, so I was hired to, um, basically look to see if we could buy some additional water supplies in, uh, in Norwell, in, in Norwell, too.
We did look to Norwell.
I haven't, I, yeah, I haven't had luck there either. Uh, okay, um, so could you switch to the next slide? I went back one time, sorry. All right, so, uh, the rig over there is, uh, what we used, um, to explore with. It's, um, it's a GeoPro rig which basically vibrates into the ground. Um, it doesn't have a super amount of power, but it has enough power to go into material where, which might be water bearing. Um, so if you hit, like, if that's till or bedrock, it stops. Um, but that basically is telling me that there really is an immediate mirroring. So this will get down to about 90 feet, um, in good material, um, if necessary. Uh, we haven't gotten that deep yet, um, even though some of the mapping looks like we might at some point. So, okay, go ahead, you can go to the next one. All right, so the, uh, initial site screening for this, um, we basically, you need at least 11 acres for public water supply uh, to meet the regulatory setbacks. So we looked at, um, all the town-owned properties as well as the private properties, we were focusing now on town-owned properties, um, that, um, that consisted of, right at the 11 acres. Um, you can't really see all of that here, but, um, but there's paper copies of it when you're, you're interested in looking at it later. And I think that the office has some, too. Um, the other things that are on here, depth to bedrock, the state has just recently come out with a, uh, um, statewide depth to bedrock map, which we were able to incorporate, we actually got it before they released it to anybody else. Uh, and, um, what that, the bedrock here is telling, uh, is telling me is basically you want to stay out of the rock if that's to go try and develop it. Um, is that, and you really need about 30, maybe 40 feet of material minimum, preferably 60. Um, and, um, so the way that we looked at this is that, is it really what happens is, is it slopes from, uh, Cohasset? We see all those red marks that are right up there. Uh, that is all, uh, that's all bedrock, alprofen, Cohasset. Uh, I didn't even bother with the northern part of, of, of Situate, um, up in the Man Hill section because that's all rock. I've also drilled a bunch of holes up there. I had to pass for golf course and, and, uh, anything reasonable. Um, and, um, and so what you're seeing is, is that if you look at, we did a bunch of slices at 30, 45, and 60. And what happens is, is the bedrock actually slopes to the southeast. Um, so when you get into the west end, um, the depth of rock out there, I'll show you that with one of the sites, um, is usually less than 30 feet. So that kind of eliminates a lot of the west end. Um, and, and the attractive places are, um, areas where it's deeper and those are places that, as you get closer to the river. Um, and, and that's kind of what, in the past, is where you guys have found all of your water. I mean, um, I might say this again tonight, there wasn't almost any place that I've been at this point that I haven't seen somebody there before me. So, um, there's signs of drilling in lots of different places. Uh, and then the third thing that we looked at was we, you bought sand and gravel, uh, to develop, uh, a, a decent public water supply. And so we used USGS data, um, to kind of identify that. Um, from that, we ended up with about eight sites that had the criteria. We eliminated three or four just because of, um, of basically the geology I went up and it just doesn't, wasn't that. So we settled on five sites. Uh, I've looked at two of them at this point, uh, based on the, looking at the Cranberry Block, I can eliminate the third one, which is a green property because the geology and everything is exactly the same and there's been a lot of work that's been done over the floor. So I'm down to two sites, um, one has, uh, let's see, one has an access issue. Um, and then I added one more of the older sites, but, so anyway. Um, that's where we ended up. Um, and, um, and, uh, we started looking, so there you go. Uh, first site, this site's actually in Norwell. Um, it's actually owned by the, the town of Situate, um, Water Department. Um, it's a beautiful, beautiful place. Um, it's right at the end of First Parish Road, um, and, um, and it was a site that I had some reservations about and I, now I have even more. Um, the, the, the mapping kind of came out, there's, there was gonna be less than 30 feet of, of material. It's still in, and it's also glacial till rather than, that it's mapped as glacial till rather than, um, uh, sand and gravel. Um, so we went out, um, we probably did, um, well, probably like 20 attempts. Um, and in almost no place got deeper than seven feet. Um, and that is because the bedrock, um, on both sides of the pond is actually exposed, you can actually see it. Um, and they actually built the dam between, basically at a fault, between these two bedrock knobs. Um, in addition to that, the whole site, uh, is absolutely covered in, uh, glacial aracts, which are uh, basically glacial holders, some of them probably seven or eight feet across, so we're never really sure whether we were hitting a rock or whether we were hitting one of these holders. But every place that we tried, there's just nothing, there's just absolutely nothing there, unless you wanted to try and go up to the rock, and that's a, a different story. There is one more that was done there, which kind of, I said, I needed to take care of it, um, which was done in the past, again, done with a different kind of rig that can get deeper, the same one that gets deeper, uh, that got deeper on the, uh, green property and the, and the Cranberry Lot. Um, that was right at the very center of the dam, and then they got down 30 feet before they hit the rock. Um, and, um, and that basically the reason for that is, is that there is, there's a bedrock fault that runs right directly through the pond. Um, and is really probably kind of the fault that connects into the rest of, uh, the Situate, First Airbrook Aquifer. I'm not talking to anyone, right? Um.
So, I mean, how far down, do you, what's the goal? Right, 'cause I don't know, 30 feet, 10 feet?
My goal is 60 feet.
60 feet is like.
Yeah, so in order to have, all right, so, so you figure if the water tables at five feet, all right, and then I have a screen that may be 10 feet in length, this would be my ideal. I don't have one of these almost anywhere. You go to Marshawn, you get something like that. But, um, but you, you want like a 10-foot screen, and then when you start pumping the well, you're gonna get drawdown, so you want to make sure you've got some safety that's there. So 60 feet is kind of that ideal. Um, if I could go deeper, I would.
Oliver, well, 60 feet.
Um, summer is deep, so.
Yeah.
Ground giant, like I mentioned, yeah. So they, they vary. Um, it's where you get the best soil is where the well gets set, so it takes the groundwater in and it filters it as it goes. So it's not the surface water you're going for the groundwater.
Oliver's, all right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
No, 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 that's a good question.
And I mean, one of the other things, just to address Peter, is some people say in, in past town meetings, you can drill 200 feet, you can get whole water, then you'll empty. So I'll let you address that.
Thank you.
I welcome it right now, but that's absolutely, that actually, at this, at this site, all right, so, so you could come back and you could come out there with a, with a drink, ring that will go into the, into the rock. And I can go down 1,000 feet, because I just did this in Norwell, and I got 3 gallons of it. Um, so, you know, it's a lot to get nothing. Um, and, and now, if you optimize your locations and you really are careful, you, you can get substantial amounts of water out of the bedrock. DT does not like to permit wells like that because you don't know where the well water is coming from. And over a long period of time, you have usually a, a water quality problem. The only well that I know of in southeastern Massachusetts, it, it's municipal, because you definitely get wells, it'll produce 200, 300 gallons a minute, um, sheer luck. But, um, Hanover actually developed, filled Beale well back in the 90s, um, which is in a big fall, um, right along the North River, and they were getting 400 gallons a minute out of the rock, it's a 600-foot well. Um, and that's now dropped off to probably like 200, and the water quality is gone, but in fact, I'm not sure they used it. So it, you want to develop something that's sustainable. Um, and, and, and you also want to make sure that you've exhausted all of your surface water, I'm sorry, um, just superficial, um, uh, wells. DT won't even let you go towards the rock until you've made sure that you can't get anything out of, out of the surface. But getting a 400 gallon a minute well, that's luck, that's luck. Um, so basically, based on this evaluation, and we didn't take water ball samples, we didn't set a well, we couldn't get down deep enough to do that. Um, you know, the site's pretty much eliminated, and that's what I recommended it by our reporter. Still beautiful site, great place to take a walk, if anybody see that. And, and there, and there is a pond, there's standing. Um, the pond is pretty, the, the dam, someone's knocked over the, the dam, so there's a small pond there. It looks like at one point, I, I heard that, um, anecdotally, there used to be, there used to be a Boy Scout camp here back in the 40s, uh, on the, uh, on the east side, chimney's still there. Uh, and there's a rock, uh, that you could dive off into the pond, and it looks like the, one of the most ideal places that I've seen, but the dam is, is gone. Uh, and there's a rock, uh, that you could dive off into the pond and it looks like the, one of the most ideal places that I've seen, but the dam is, is gone. Um, and um, so there's no, there's no.
We looked at years ago, it was a normal dam, but the water that we would get by building up there wouldn't be one of them. I, I think it was estimated about two million gallons, so really would do us much good for the cost of the thing to restore the dam.
Plus restoration at this point, yeah.
Is that why we were getting rid of dams?
People were getting ready, ready rid of dams, in fact, I'm sure that, that might have been the, the cause of, of this one. Back in the woods, nobody knows about it, it wasn't quite correct.
And is this the reason we almost won?
Yes, it was, my understanding is, sorry, is it fed into our, um, aquifer, so that they, they bought the land, in fact, that's all, didn't go into the wells.
Yeah.
And this is the one that's in Norwell?
Yeah. The land in Norwell, just know the law.
It's a little controversial when we did it, because we couldn't be bothered by what Norwell, I protected, but we bought it to protect it, so, we did it.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's a beautiful piece of land.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, uh, next slide. Alright, so this is the Cranberry Bog, um, I had great hopes for this. Um, the, but we put in, again, to meet regulatory setbacks, the only place it meets that is the, uh, the dike that goes between where the pond is, um, and the Cranberry Bogs. Um, and we did, I spent four days out there, um, getting variable results. Um, and they're, they're basically what would happen, alright, so it's basically the site is underland by thick layer of peat. Alright, so just what Cranberry Bog is, there's thirty feet deep there, uh, more or less. Um, but beneath that is, uh, rather than the glacial, um, outwash material that the USGS said was there, is glacial lake material. Um, and what that is, is that you have a lake, it does, the water doesn't move very fast, the fine material settles to the bottom, you can't pump any water on it. So that goes down to about, uh, uh, anywhere between, it, I, the, the piece anywhere between ten and, and twenty, some of the places is probably forty. Um, and so again, with the rig that we had, we were getting down about forty feet. We were seeing the, the silty gray material, which is not a good sign, a lot brown. Um, and um, and with discontinuous pockets of, of gravel out there that actually will produce water. Um, you know, in fact, actually one that I did probably twenty-five years ago, out there will do, still do forty-eight gallons a minute. Um, and um, and that's pretty good. And if I could get ten of those, it would be viable. But the problem is, alright, so if we go down to the other end, got another one that would do a hundred gallons a minute. Um, this is out of a two-inch well, so that's really good. Um, the problem is, is that over a short period of time, the, um, the pumping rate dropped off significantly. And you can see that it started pulling in surface water, which is not a good thing. Um, and, and so there's, there's nothing that's continuous all the way down there. Um, and then the, the water quality is not good. Um, the iron levels are about ten parts per, a million, which is the drinking water standard is point three, and you know, point three you need to treat. So you need to treat the water. Um, and the manganese levels were up, but they weren't super bad. Uh, so there, there's, we hunted. I mean, I really, honestly, really wanted to do this. Um, I really thought that it would, it would. Um, but i- i- in talking to the, the landowner, he was talking about seeing the clay that was up, up above and previous studies all kind of indicated that there's a mantle of, of this silty material with pockets of gravel that will produce some water, um, down to a depth of about forty feet. Forty feet on, down to ninety feet where the bedrock comes in, is that dense material that, that this rig will not get through. But the person that was out there before was able to at least characterize that. Um, it doesn't look like there's anything out of that, so, um. So based on all that, um, you know, this does not look like a potential groundwater supply. Um, so, you know, I think it probably deserves still looking at, is a, is a watershed protection area. Um, as possible future, um, you know, future connecting to that, to the reservoir, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's worth looking at, at that, but it's, and, and this is more of a conservation effort and a safety effort for the, for the, um, for the water supply. Um, but as far as contributing to the water supply, it's not going to be the, I, I, I honestly was hoping to get four hundred gallons a minute out of it. And I, that was pretty bummed.
Peter, and I, I will ask, is it worth bringing a heavy-duty rig in to go deeper?
No, I, I, I thought about that, well, a heavy-duty rig has gone. So there's a, uh, it was basically a, um, driving wash rig, um, that I, I know you go up, but they, but basically it drives a, a hundred and forty pound hammer into the ground, and then when you can't go any deeper, like you hit a holder, you hit the bedrock, you take a, a, basically a, you basically pour right through it. So, and then you complicate it through that, and pretty much that's what's, um, used for any kind of geological work, et cetera, et cetera, that's done other places. Uh, but again, like I said, you pound, if you're pounding into the, into the ground, you're not going to get any water out of it, it's just not going to happen. So, uh, so yeah, no, I don't, I, again, place you could look at, come out and look at for bedrock, um, if you've exhausted other places.
What, so did you find, I don't know if you tested, did you test for PFAS? Not wondering.
I have not tested, I haven't tested for PFAS, um, only because it, it wasn't going to go, um, the way that I wanted. However, um, I think that it is worth, if you want, if you want to, I don't think there's PFAS here. I think, um, I talked to the, the DT about the pesticides that they would want to see tested for, and I can do that. But rather than the groundwater, I would test the surface water. And I think that's on the list when, when we start putting something in.
So at a hundred, alright, so it's not a hundred gallons a minute, it's probably less, just.
No, I didn't.
I mean, you're looking at a, you know, a hundred thousand, a hundred and forty-four thousand gallons a day.
Mm-hmm.
That's not insignificant.
It's not, if, 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 if I could pump a hundred gallons a minute and it was sustainable, I say, yeah, this is marginal, the water quality's not good, you need, gonna need to treat, um, you know, maybe you want additional evaluations on that, you could do that, I mean, you're right, if you.
It's, it's, it's going to become a math game because there's other areas, you might have PFAS and this on going.
And I think that's, that you need to finally get through this, okay? To identify whether there's some other place that's better. Maybe you end up, you know, here, but I, 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 you know, I, it, it's not, it's. I do not believe you can get this primitive for four hundred gallons a minute. If you get it prompted for a hundred gallons a minute, maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe, that's not a definite.
So you're seventy-five?
Maybe true.
No, you're still at seventy-five a minute, I thought, I mean.
I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with you, I have a well in Norwell that does seventy gallons a minute, it's iron that we don't use.
Yeah, but then he said drop.
But you get also only three months. In reality.
Yeah.
Well, you're right, who knows?
I think that's the other, the other thing here, it's a level of treatment, I mean, you know, like I said, the iron content is high, magnesium, magnesium is high and the bacteria is too loose.
And do you think if they're, without the regulatory requirements, you were able to go further back or further? You might get it.
I'm just curious. Uh, without the regulatory requirement, alright, so, so you could move up, and so it's, for, if a single well is four hundred feet or a two-bill well field, which is what I would expect to do along that bank, which is basically four inch wells, that, that, that's how I would do it, that was two hundred and fifty feet. So y- you could do that, um, along the bank there. Going the other way, where you see to the, to the south there, that's all water. You should take a walk along here, that's beautiful also. That's, that's, that all is, uh, two to five feet of water and eventually gets into about, um, ten feet in some areas. So you can't go back, and that goes all the way across town line into, into Norwell, so you can't go in that direction. Theoretically, you could come up towards the street if there was, even with the regulatory, um, requirements. But the material all looks exactly the same and all, because I, I didn't do it, but previously, see that? Have the ability now to look at old things and be able to compare to them to what I see now, to kind of focus a little bit better. So each time it's, it's a little bit more that, so, I, I'm not saying, again, there's water.
Not best practice, you didn't find any water.
No, I didn't, I'm not a view, but that's for the understanding. I'm sorry, question?
Well, I actually have a question on Norwell, where does Norwell get its water from? There is no water treatment plant in Norwell, right?
Yes, there is.
There is, where is it?
Um, South Street behind, um, behind, uh, the mall, there's a, there's also a treatment plant for Hanover there. Um, and, um, and because of the location, we're not treating for PFAS as well. Where we had, we were well, well, not well over the standard, we were over the standard, we're not there anymore. The other well field that we have, um, is next to the fire station, um, close to, across to the fours. Uh, we have a well field that does five hundred gallons a minute, three wells. And then there's another well field up off of Grove Street, um, which does, again, probably five hundred gallons a minute, the big producer for both the Hanover and Norwell, it's on Third Harry Brook. We take out a million gallons a day there and a million and a half, Hanover takes out a million and a half.
Well, because the, sort of the, the, the old ancient joke is, is that Norwell got all the wells and Sichetum didn't really get any wells when, when the towns split up. But, um, so, I feel like this has been done and done and done and done, this search for water in the west end. Um, there's even been a, a local background book about it. So, um, you know, I appreciate all the references, but it seems to me, so, the efforts have been going on for over a hundred years.
But, like I said, there's, in, in fact, you can do this in Norwell too, you can go to sites and you can see, you can see the old two and a half inch wells that are that have been driven into the ground, or you can see on, uh, the Blueberry Farm, which is the next, that, that they, they tried there as well. Um, and, um, you know, so, yeah, I'm just kind of, I think I just thought the highs across the tees to give you a direction for what you've got left.
I know, it's the opposite, because somebody always says, what about the Cranberry Bog, what about, what about, what about, what about? And until you're an expert in it, you just, it's just all what about?
I, I thought the Cranberry Bog, if, 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 I thought the Cranberry Bog's going to work.
Yeah.
So, but until you put something in the ground, you don't know.
Right.
So.
Well, appreciate it.
Yeah. As I go on, just take one last slide, I just, these are the figures that we use to kind of identify the, 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 the orange and yellow, so it shows depth to bedrock at each location in town by three hundred, three hundred, three hundred by three hundred square foot, uh, blocks. So these are two places, there's another one that I'm going to look at, um, that's not here, um, this is the.
So what, what's this green, what you're looking for, or you're looking for red?
Yeah, you want red.
You want red.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you can see, yeah, or yellow or orange, I mean, that, those are all going to be the, that, but see where you get into the, the, the reds, sometimes, you know, that, that it, it looks like the bedrock gap's pretty close, it looks like the USGS stuff is not great. Um, so where you see in the depth to bedrock, that seems to be getting pretty close. Um, and, um, and, uh, and so, you know, as long as you're in the fifty-five, sixty-foot, you should be okay. Um, you know, I could do something with it. Um, the, the one on top is the, um, Blueberry Farm, that is town land. Um, we're negotiating, getting access, there's a, there was a deed that was put together a number of years ago that gave, um, agricultural rights to that, so anyway, we're working on getting access to that. Um, and then the, um, the other place, well seventeen is at the, at the far end of the, this, the, oh. That's a holy property, um, which is what it's labeled as on MASTIS. Um, well seventeen is at the, uh, far right here, and I think that it's probably worth, worth to take a look down at the far left. Um, originally tried to get some access off of three A, but they didn't want me to go through their property. Um, there's that piece that's neck, right next to it, which I'm just going to stand up and point it out. This is the property, this is probably where we're going to try and go. Um, there are some wetlands back in here, but we can avoid them, this is town property, I tried to get in through that, but no luck. And that's the green property right there, and so this is the Cranberry Bog right down here. So we're not too far away, and I, and it looks like that maybe things get, so, so to get good gravel that to get water out of, you need water to run through it. So the old First Harry Brook ran through here and probably took a lot of the silt away. So that's the reason to take a look there, and then further up, I was trying to get out of First Harry Brook, um, water shed just because that's where everything is and that's what impacted most, but it's all going back to that. Again, I don't think I'm, I'm not going to be able to reinvent the wheel. Oh, my God. Keep going, that's great, um, other questions? I'm good, I'm good.
Very thorough.
Yeah, but this is, I mean, thank you, can't wait to see, you know, more, have, and this is what, yeah, we have, there's a lot of, a lot of projects and a lot of things that are coming up. So I appreciate it, this is great. Yeah. Thank you. Well, it's interesting, sorry that I had not been successful.
No, information is successful, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which will pay you. We're paying you for a gallon.
Whatever, he's got a lot of water.
So I'll take a hundred thousand.
No, I'll take a hundred thousand.
Alright, thank, thank you.
Alright. Uh, now we, I'll give everyone a second to get up their budget books. So, I just want everything. Ever, you, bar. Kevin Caverdy, let us up, yeah, DPW administration is first. Oh, oh, I didn't see you, Sean, I'm sorry.
I was schmucking.
Yeah, so, I can remember the second. No.
So would you like us to get detailed for all of the agenda or just natural, how you see?
Yeah, so I, I think, um, love to hear some accomplishments and, and some of the this department or others, I think we know some challenges, but we'd love to hear, and the public needs to hear, all the work that we've done, because it's, it did have a lot. So if you have some of those kind of good things, it'd be awesome. Is there any else, folks? I mean, I think we know more of the problems, but more, I want to know some of the distance.
Um, okay.
It's been so much.
So, uh, I will keep you on the administration, and I'm just, um, you know, the whole budget number has changed, I think we're down one point six percent. Uh, pretty straightforward. Um, you know, what I can say is our, our crews have done a fantastic job. Uh, we really have a good few people that work together. Uh, we integrated a lot of the things in the DPW that, uh, back when I first got here, they were all individual bodies. Now, we have people from water, people from sewer, they all plow, they all help out in emergencies, they, you know, they share, guys at the transfer station want to do um, chainsaw classes so that they can all clean up, you know, a lot of different things now, so, um, we've really integrated things. These guys have done a great job helping out, um, integrating everybody as one group, so if we do have any issues or problems, we can all, we can all jump on it together as a team as opposed to, you know, the water department saying, oh, we're just going to go make water, let us know when the streets are clear, you know, so. Um, that's been, that's been a huge thing we've been working on, and the guys have made a great job in the past few years. So real happy with it, mate, can't say enough about the guys, the guys around here, they, you know, guys, gals, everybody, they, they work hard. Um, and do a good job, you know, fully is working very good, yes. Pretty happy with it.
Questions about admin? Well, again, yeah, the budget numbers are pretty solid, as far as we are.
I was saying.
Yeah.
Pretty level.
Yeah, actually, yeah, yeah, down a percent. That's great, no, great to hear about more, but I hope you can do it. Alright, engineering.
Um, engineer, and I will say, unfortunately, Mike could not make it tonight, he did have a recent cardio operation and he's still going to be recovering. So, um, I will, I will cover for his tonight, um, or I'll let Sean, I will take over for that, but, uh, now, engineering, I'll, I'll let Sean talk about that and what was some of the project, you know, some of what they've accomplished and some of the good things that they've done. And the department gets a lot done, they're, they're involved, I, I can't say enough praises, CPC, you know, uh. And the department gets a lot done, they're, they're involved, I, I can't say enough praises, CPC, you know, uh, Monica Lincoln House, you know, the guys are involved in everything, so, on that, I'll, I'll hand it on you.
Yeah, we are involved in a lot of contracts, uh, no matter how small, um, so, so charity at the project along, um, finishing the double water main on three A last year was a big accomplishment. Getting that ready for the, the construction of the new water treatment plant. Um, some of the struggles were being shorthanded, uh, for a large percent of last year. Uh, we were down to two guys with, uh, quite a few projects going on. We started off the agreement with the western food beach inertia project that we thought was gonna be much more complicated, traffic wise, truck wise. That went off without a hitch. Uh, it's the first time we'd worked with that contractor, uh, I'd have him back any day of the week. So hopefully we start to see some of these FEMA projects, uh, that we're, we're in the middle of putting seven or eight, uh, different bid packages to go up this month, or early February. Uh, so it's been a, a, a tough winter, um, in terms of push and work out, but that'll all take place for construction come spring and summer. Those are some of the accomplishments from the department last year, especially being shorthanded, uh, we also wrapped up a lot of main, uh, project that was completed, uh, the year before, uh, the punchless items and final paving to complete. So those were wrapped up before we started the new one this year. Uh, we're in the design phase right now to, uh, finish the double water main on three A to get it to the well. Um, it's bottom of the hill up front here at Town Hall, uh, so we can treat that well water, uh, at the new treatment plant. Uh, and that's being prepared now, so that can, can hit the street at the end of the month, uh, early February, but this year. Again, folks at home, again, dealing with the, I don't think I heard many at all complaints of the beach inertia, we'll take it up through that, so. Again, folks, I don't think, we're dealing with that, new water treatment plant, engineer also, as he's just said, water main on a major state highway and everything else, so yes, there are a lot of accomplishments, and thank you for that, because that is that's a lot, just right there. Um, if we can get into the budget a little bit, because that's the big, um, item discussed, but any other questions about roles or accomplishments?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, we're so nice over the holidays and walking down on line of beach, I can't tell you how many people stopped and said my heart was amazing, and just like so thrilled, so, we'll see what the next door goes, but right now, I'm pretty happy with the results. It's amazing, it really is amazing.
Yeah, I was down there today, and on the little tide, couldn't believe I've already looked on, on, right.
Yeah, I had one woman who was a like, you know, like a, a townie, went to be almost in tears, went, this is like it was when I was a girl, and she was thrilled. And I told her, we didn't build juke beach, but we did protect her, see, well. But it, it was a nice time, but so, yeah, it is definitely appreciated. Numbers?
Numbers, uh, yeah, there's a big
Uh, our biggest concern with the numbers is the roads and seawall funds, we're not funded. Um, this year, we did have a problem on Oceanside Drive, we have a section of seawall that undermined. We were able to take money out of that to help do emergency repairs to that effect. Um, you, you know, it's just, it's, we run into these things all the time, we have surprises, and, and that money is handy to take care of some of those issues.
Yeah, so can you give us the actuals here, um, for twenty, um, to, year to date for twenty-five?
Or for seawalls?
Yeah, for that line.
Roads and seawalls is about a hundred and eighty-five thousand of the floor shore portion is either covered or extended, you know, the road course is two hundred dollars. On that line.
Two hundred dollars?
Two hundred dollars so far.
Okay.
We're not, we're not in payment season.
Oh, right.
But we never, Kevin and I work together, and we never let those funds close out, so we always make sure that, that those are fully extended. When Mike gets back, we've got a couple sections of guard rail that we're likely to be replacing here, it would use that money to do that guard rail. Um, you know, one of the areas we just paved, that's some old wooden guard rail, we're gonna see if we can replace that, get some other damaged guard rail, and we'll watch if all the others. Last year we funded that to the, uh, stall in Windhoofs.
That's good. And seven hundred and fifty, that was actual, was twenty-four, was that the line share of that seawall, or?
It would have been seawall, the covers is mostly four of them, here's the part that you just referenced.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I have a question on the staffing, the co-op staff engineer, is that requested, I didn't see that in, is that in the budget?
So I requested it, it was not approved, what I wanted to do was, uh, working through Clinton County Highway and some of the civil engineering colleges, we were looking to see if we could take on a, um, a co-op student during the summer, that we could put to work and help out with some of the projects that we have.
Okay, I didn't even see it taken out, that's why I was trying.
I don't think it made it.
Oh, didn't even make it, or just ask?
Yeah, there, there.
I did it? Okay, first, first item, sorry, that followed.
Oh, yeah, okay, there it is. Okay. Such a good idea, shame.
I've been working with you, Lowell, and, and a lot of things, and, and, you know, um, we, we thought it'd be a good, a good thing to do, and I actually attract a lot of people, uh, civil engineers to getting involved with municipalities. If we could get some local kids, it would be, we'd be doing great.
When does anyone know if their career is a co-op or when it's closing?
There is, actually, I'm, I'm a low, a low lump, so I'm, I was, I went up there recently, I was invited up to talk about, um, municipal careers, and they have a career fair coming up, um, I wanna say in March, and I've been invited up to talk about that, so you know, maybe at some point, then, you know, we'll at least talk about careers and try to attract engineers to municipal.
No, we'll call.
For the D5, that's not an ongoing expense, it's a, it's a, uh,
It's a long term.
Three months. And we use solar wind last year. All right, next week.
Roads and seawalls.
Roads and seawalls. We, whatever, what are people's thoughts on that this year? There's what, a hundred thousand left in solar?
No, there's money, there's some money left, we didn't completely wipe it out in case this happened again.
But we give money in on the going taxes, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, we have to wait until we have shakes out. I mean, all, we have to go through this.
Through everything, yeah. What, what are your general thoughts on using that again?
Not opposed to.
Not opposed. All right. All right, we're gonna start next to that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Great.
And not to keep talking about the co-ops, want to create things, but it's a
But, you guys will, whatever. Those river hawks.
If we had a, you, there you go, if we had a, if we had a co-op, um, technically, sometimes we have to hire engineering firms. Oh, you can be spending a hundred and twenty dollars an hour to have a consultant to oversee a project where if we can train and have, um, co-op working with us, you know, you might be able to get away with paying twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour to do the same work and take notes and track what's going on, and so that was something I thought to the other projects.
That's like UML shit, that's like an, becoming like a
Yeah.
Sounds like a tech.
Fish.
No, this is great. All right, that is, uh, what are we next? Transfer Station, a new favorite. Four thirty-three, it's a great business. I know a few accomplishments. I like that new signage.
We need to throw this up for this. The priority be up before the meat up.
The hard part is keeping up with the regulations, they wanna keep pulling things out of the waste stream, so we need new containers to handle this or that. Um, the gas is positive, if, if there's an end user, uh, that's the hard part, they, they wanna pull it out of the waste stream so they're not burning it like they're chasing food soon, um, and that's, I think that's due to its moisture content, they wanna burn everything. Put something with a lot of moisture in it, now you drop in that energy that we just use as a, um, burn energy to waste, or waste to energy. Um, that's what they're talking on the horizon, um, we were already set up for the mattress and the textile, man, that went in place, we had already started doing that. Tie it to it, become in lock. Um, I mean, we did add a new, um, detection system at the entrance, um, to detect, um, low level radiation that may be coming in through the waste stream. So far, everything's gone well with that, had some incidents earlier this year, um, that, that the state involved, um, when it arrived at CMAS, and then manifested, the state gets involved, the radiation has to come back, it's situates, and we have to find out what it is, and store it on site until it's safe to be removed. They don't wanna, they don't say.
So they detected at CMAS, and then they send it back plus?
Send it back, so it's a significant, it's a significant cost.
And money.
And, and the cost is all borne by us.
Yeah.
So one of the things that Sean, Sean's been working on with food down there, is now we have our own radiation detectors set up to, to try to figure, you know, have this and, and it can, it can happen simply, people go in and, and they treat it, um, you know, chemotherapy, or it could be somebody throws up, or smoke detectors at once, that could trigger this and, and cause it, so, and then you have to chase it down, pull it out of the trash and store it until such time out, like it gets out to the safe home.
Sure, every part that drives past the gate is detected.
Oh, yeah, it's like a thanks setup, I have a smoke detector to throw in, and I have a fry.
Are you afraid?
I'm afraid, I don't wanna be the
Okay, well, that's a good question.
I'm like pulling out the window, if I'm like
A lot of the new ones are, are photo, photo, like, photo sensitive.
So there are a lot of the, it's only the old ones that regulate, so, so if you came in with one, you could talk to the person. If you talked to the person at the, at the gate, and he would hopefully guide you to a place where we can store it and dispose of it, if it's, if it is
There's air, there's a man in first mouth that's like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just put it in Kevin's truck, this. Don't worry about that.
They'd love nothing more to have me go in and have their, have their own go on.
But, uh, but, and also, folks up there, I love that, I'm super fabulous, so nice. Yeah, very staff, yep, enforcement's been better, I, I, it's been really good.
Yeah, there's some, there's some in check and blue bags.
Uh, a lot of it, so.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Yeah, we have a part-time employee with, with our partial P work Saturday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday typically to, to check the blue bags. Well, wait, I'm not supposed to, not supposed to get the schedule, I can stop.
That's gonna be Monday.
He does no say.
No one's looking Monday.
He does no say.
Oh, my God, yeah, there's the clear back, uh, but overall, it's a two percent, a two percent increase on the budget side, uh, some indirect costs. These are emergency fund, uh, this is a whole really reduced technical services. Technical service. Creative emergency. Oh, yeah, yes, sorry, just a
Well, I know this is the budget, this is not the sticker discussion, but
Yeah, we're coming up.
We're, we're, we're getting to, we're getting to a point where people are starting to really seriously say is, am I paying more to have a sticker in the blue bags than I would be to have someone do private haul? I feel like we're getting very close to that, so, um.
One of the big things with the private haulers, and this is something probably for the board help to discuss, is they don't recycle.
Right.
And they, we move it all by trash, we handle everything multiple times to, you know, comply with the rules and regulations, um, so that
And we sit on stuff that used to make money for us when we recycled it, but now, not only
It, it fluctuates.
Pay in some cases, for some cases, we sit on stuff, was a glass we were sitting on for a while?
Well, we've been, we've been sitting on glass this year.
But I'm just saying, I mean, it, it, it fluctuates, so what you're saying is that the, the, these private haulers don't have to be recycling.
Right.
When soon, if, that, if at some point the government gets around, wherever they are, gets around to saying to private haulers, you must recycle, then they're just gonna pass their
Cost, not everybody else, and the cost of the water, they have to Um, right now, all the recycling just goes out with the trash, it just, it doesn't get recycled.
And so when they send their stuff to CMAS, they're not looking for them to have radioactive too?
No, they, they drive their, they drive through all Yep.
But it's not, they don't care if there's plastic in there, they don't care if there's glass in there. So it's, it's a risk, if we were to decide we're not gonna have a transfer station anymore.
Do we, can I ask you a question? Do we not have any regulatory control or oversight on the private haulers? That, like, I, I got a thing in the mail the other day, forty-five dollars a week if you wanna bring your barrel down the end of the driveway. And then they don't necessarily go through it, they just dump it, but is there no?
I think the board helped, that was in them.
Is there, is there, do they have to register, or do they pay a fee to do this in our town, or are they just allowed to provide some, do their thing?
I think that they, no, not on work.
Is that something we should contemplate with the board help?
I think what we should have the board help look at is requiring that private haulers, people do private disposal, recycle.
Right, things like that, I, I, I mean, we're, we're regulating hot dog trucks, and, uh, things like that, and ice cream vendors.
Well, and it does seem unfair for us to have to have our people who use the transfer station separate all the various categories while they're not expecting the people who are using the private haulers to have to do the same kind of thing, so, um.
I was out in Southern California Christmas, and, uh, home I was staying, and they have three different barrels that they have to put things in, and then they drag those down to the street.
But if you do single stream, most of it ends up in the trash.
Yeah.
Because it gets contaminated, so, do you recycle more, because more is going into the recycling? Does that just mean your barrels full? So then anything leftovers goes in the recycling, there's no way to pay for bag? So if it's gonna work right, then you would have to require that they, glass, that'll look less.
Right.
Isn't that what we do at us, last
Yes. No, well, is
We would at my house, what?
No, a single stream, and, you know, you throw a greasy pizza box in with the recycling, and now the recycling is contaminated.
No, that's any greasy pizza box.
No, it's just me.
Yeah, it depends on where you buy your pizzas from.
Can't have where you
I mean, it had, the broadest
It's very special, yeah.
Right, whether more regulation or Well, I think you've got to
Yeah, I mean, it's good land.
Maintain some fairness, and, and the going forward of the environment and all of that is important. So that's something you've worked on. It's a transfer station existential question.
Yeah.
And, and we're regulated very thoroughly on what we do, and obviously, that's why the signs change all the time. You can't throw off fresh drywall, you can throw an old drywall, but fresh drywall, if you cut it, it can't go off the trash. There's different things like that, there's all sorts of
How broad, what, like?
Well, if you were working on your kitchen, put in new drywall, technically, it's not supposed to go into the trash.
Your basement flooded, and you took out
Yeah. Y, y, and if you, yeah, if you were taking up the old drywall, you could, but the new drywall will cut, make more out, and I'm supposed to do it, it's gonna
That's making results.
There's a lot of things that don't make sense with the rules, like, sorry. Just little things like that. Sorry, get off on it.
Yeah.
No, no, that's
And I didn't really get a stop track, but
Well, it's important, it's
All right, DPW Highway.
Okay. So, um, I'm taking that from Mike, Mike's here in spirit. Um, we will see.
Let's move to
Overall, um, salaries would decrease, um, and there would be elimination of two seasonal employees, um, which are, are usually a big help, they, they work at the booths, they do, they can do anything from hot holes, signs, sign replacement or, or whatever they'll, they'll work with the guys, and it's handed up to two extra bodies. Um, big things that were done this year, um, and some of the challenges, one of the biggest well, they've done a great job, they, they've done well with the paving, they've done well on, uh, patching roadways, um, keeping up with everything. Uh, the street sign program has been going good, they've been replacing a lot of signs as we go.
The street sweep, it does.
Street sweep, it's worked out phenomenal. The, the guys love, we got a new street sweepper a few years ago, and they, it, it makes a huge difference, we used to have it back in the drive, now it's The, the guys love, we got a new street sweeper a few years ago and they, it, it makes a huge difference. We used to have a vacuum driver now, said no. Um, and it's a pelican pee, which means it's pneumatic and the guys love it. Um, they really take good care of it. We've mapped out routes in different areas of town and we've actually been able to do the whole town twice, which is like a first. That, that's, that's ever been accomplished.
That's why it's, it's better.
We also, you could, down by the beaches, sometimes what we'll do, we'll bring in contractors. Because we'll bring in contractors just to clean up all the sand. It really does a lot of damage to the sweeper and we don't wanna damage our sweeper. We wanna maintain that. So if somebody's willing to go out there for reasonable money, you go for a couple of weeks, that would just get down all the, not the streets. On Oceanside Drive or even down Conrock, we do that. The biggest kind of risk for highway that I think is something we requested, is we requested additional fifty-five thousand dollars for streetlights. We've been having a huge problem with streetlight failure, especially these LED lights. In the past, uh, they were handled at a point by National Grid. That, I think it was about twelve, thirteen years ago, uh, the town purchased the streetlights from Grid and they were replaced through, uh. I think a mass save program and LED lights went up. But the problem is if something goes wrong with the LED lights. Uh, we have to have an electrician come out and bucket truck and approve with police details and it gets expensive. Um, and you've been having more and more of these lights stop fail. Uh, it was supposed to, I think, last twenty, twenty-five years, but we're not seeing that at all right. So. We requested additional funds to help do this, um, and keep up with the lights. Um, because we actually have a company come down from Long Reading, uh, a couple of electricians in the bucket truck that do this work, they were a little bitters. And, uh, with all the lights, it's, it's just hard to keep up with them. It's, it's starting to also full time, full time jobs. It's, it's really. Tell you a lot. So then, that's kind of the biggest challenge and something that we have to run.
We don't do that with our own people?
We're not electricians. You know what I mean? So they can't necessarily go out and work on a light if it's ballast or an LED, you know, they have to be. Certified to work on it and have electrical access to the light and. It's not to say we still work, we still go out and work on traffic lights and, and other lights, but that, but the LED lights, they could, you know, go up.
Is this the budget for? Yes, I'm gonna ask this question again. Trash barrels. This is the department that would handle the number?
I'm typically handles, uh, two more ago.
It's two more down, okay.
Two more down.
I'll wait.
Good to know, you buy one of those.
One of those LED, back then on LED lights, never lasts seven years.
They never do, although my kids can turn on the light.
The other issue we have is, is a lot of subdivisions that were taken over throughout the years and accepted, speed acceptance. And one of the things I'm probably gonna request in the future is we don't take over the lights. Because every light that goes in is different than every subdivision because they get the cheapest light possible. And we have a hard time finding parts and pieces.
Oh, they do decorative lights.
Can't you just make them use a certain light? Get that with the.
Talking to the planning board.
Planning board? Maybe we should have a conversation, anything about that.
Well, except once you step on their toes in terms of the aesthetics of certain areas, I mean, you want the village areas to have some.
Right, but.
But the overall subdivision question, I think, right?
Right, not like it only has to be one light, but a type of light where we need that.
Right, or replaced.
And we've got problems in some of the ornamental lights, we've not said to it and reembush that we can't get parts for. And we piece things together or, or, you know, find them out and they're very expensive to do.
Right.
Light's a big, a big issue and everybody always comes up and says, I need new light because, you know, it's playing the street at night, you know. Yeah, we have a, we have a, a policy of when a light is justified. So that's what we try to say by.
Is there a compromise on the fifty-five thousand that you guys would be happy with?
We'd take a hundred dollars, I mean, just to keep up with the lights, I mean, not, not sound ridiculous.
Right now, in your, in your mind, in your schedule, how many lights right now are required for this week?
I'm gonna say, and Mike could tell us for sure, but I think we got a list of about fifty-eight.
Already?
Yeah.
Back off.
Yeah.
Well, not to jump it, Jen, what we do is we wait. We don't call when there's a light out.
Right.
We wait till we have a full day and maybe it's good out, so.
And we'll do as many as we can. And I, I pulled that number up, the last time I saw the list, it was, it was. Snow and ice. Uh, snow and ice, no change to that budget. We do the best we can to manage it and that includes. Purge and salt in the summer, um, and as well as using Brian and doing the best we can with that. Uh, snow and ice, believe it or not, we've already had six events where we've had ice and we've been out salting and sanding. Um, different areas, uh, back about two weeks ago, we calls from our, we, we're into a weather service, we have a weather service. They were saying, you know, by, you know, by five o'clock, you should expect two to five inches of snow and, you know, it's snowing down now, it's already turned over. And we, I'm out, it never turned over, but then around ten thirty, it all, it all turns to a sheet of ice. So we had the guys there and the guys went out and softened it. And, uh, so, uh. It, that never ends, it always seems to please us. So nothing extraordinary, snow and ice.
The trash barrel, I'm looking for, yeah. Public grounds.
It, it has been brought to my attention.
Okay, all right.
To get the trash complaints, um, that the amount of trash cans, trash barrels that get off course, which now I'm not sure who's in charge of that. Has diminished.
So there's, there weren't none up there as of yesterday. As of today, my guys dropped two off because I talked to Ian and I said, we're not going in there to manage them. And he said, I've got people here that do maintenance, they will handle, people give us the fifty-five gallon props and we brought them in and they're gonna take care of those. So that should be all set.
Perfect, because say if you're managing off course now, so to me, they should be able to manage a couple of trash cans.
And, and I said the same, Ian, he agreed on it beside, he said, if we give you the cans, we'll take care of it.
Okay, um, and I guess Conservation Park, Dirtway Conservation Park, there was like overflowing. Which I hate to hear that people are actually doing what we, I don't understand why people do it. They just put stuff right beside and chink. Um, but i- i- is that a matter of, because it was vacation a couple of weeks, that there was more use down there or?
Well, one of the things.
You've got a schedule that you sort of adhere to?
We work Monday through Friday typically with the trash and, and we have, I had a whole presentation back a year or so ago. And what we did is we eliminated the overtime, um, over the length of months. So we don't go out there, we. We have been going out there, sometimes do first Fridays and everything else, but we did not fund the overtime to run the trash truck. Saturdays and Sundays. So, um, I'm not gonna have the guys out, we've cut back on the barrels, but we'll save on the overtime, we don't do it. Um, it's not funded, it's not funded at the weekends, correct? So, people do go out, we do have household trash in there. Um, a, a lot of different things, you'd be amazed to what comes out of there. Um, it's tough on the guys because like they come in and they need expert bodies on Mondays to, to clean up all the trash on the different areas and all the overflow. Um, but like I said, it's, it's just not in budget and I don't wanna use our overtime if we have an emergency and I need those guys for something else.
So I guess I would ask the question, is it possible to put in, in a case like that, a sign up? That says if, if the trash can is full, please take it with you, please be, just to, to say to people, please do first. Um, uh, because I think sometimes it's just a matter of, I hate to say shame people, but to shame them. Into understanding that they shouldn't leave their trash next to it.
Don't do that first.
You don't do that.
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Mike when you get back.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something we could stencil on some of the cans.
Yeah.
You know, come up with some, something that we could say, I'll, I'll see what you can do.
Cause I just, I don't wanna hear that they are trash sitting behind, beside the trash can. And, you know, if we have to squeeze the budget.
Maybe people need to know that we don't pick up trash on the weekends, that if the barrel is full.
Right.
Don't assume, I mean, the good nature of well, if they're all sleeping here, they'll get it tomorrow morning. Don't assume that they're gonna be there.
No, I think, I think the whole problem is I just, I object to anyone who leaves any trash beside trash. I just think that's probably bad behavior. The, the trash can, what do you move?
Very uncouth.
So thank you about the off course.
That, that was an easy one. I had already talked to Ian about it, so like, yeah, we were thinking you.
I think of you all the time when I hear the word trash, I'm like, oh, why do you park?
So, um, in the public grounds, uh, they've been doing a fantastic job, especially the tree work. They've been taking down a lot of trees. Um, you know, there's been a lot of streets that were paved this year that we, we really pulled back the trees. We did with a combination of what we could do with our own forces and then we brought contractors in. Um, some of the trees, we fight cranes, we've, we've been spending a lot of money on, on tree removal to try to, well. Saving up some of these streets. So, uh, and they've been doing a great job with that. We do have a bucket truck that's on order and hopefully we see it through this year. Um, but we're hoping we can do that, we can break people off who do much rework ourselves and try to help out with that. They did a great job with the fields this year, I think. Um, we've been talking to soccer. Um, they're interested in, in doing some extra cutting on a couple of their fields as well as, uh. Softball, our baseball league, and we've worked out some agreements with them. Um, on the contractor and the insurance and everything else to avoid liability for the town. So. Uh, I'll have to reach out to them again and find who they're gonna be using and make sure we can all pay for it if that's what it's like.
They're gonna pay for it.
They're gonna pay for it. So typically what we have in our big mall, we've got our big Toro, which is ninety-six inches wide. And the typical cut that we do is three inches for that. And for some of the soccer fields, they are looking for like a two and a half inch cut. So they wanna go a little lower. We have a problem with that because when we go low, we can scalp some grass and we damage to the blade and, and everything else. So we typically stay at three and we said we'd be open if they wanna try and do it at two and a half, we would, we would work with them and, you know, see how it works out. Uh, it, it, a lot of that falls though on the subgrade field itself. It feels pretty old and it is a little bit rutted, it could be. Slightly problematic, you're not gonna get, um, you're not gonna get Wembley Stadium, you know, on the grass there, you know, but. Give it a go, see how, how well we can.
Tree work has been noticed. They're, they're working really good, so I appreciate that.
No, the guys have been doing a great job with it and, uh, and our, our people really do a, do a good job with it. The biggest cut on, on that budget is seasonal salaries. And typically what we do is we bring in a lot of high school, mostly college students and, um. And they do a lot of work. We've got, we actually had a couple this year that have been repeats. We actually had helping out with some of the haulers, they go out and we're whacking. They really help out, they do a good job, they work a full day, um, and really help make the town a better place. But that budget was one of the budgets that, that we hit, so we've got less seasonal salary potentially on, on the next year, so, um. We'll do the best we can with what we have.
Yes, we did a great job with the new property and water handling and, um, around the field.
Thank you.
Not like cutting paths around the wild flower.
But the seasonal salaries, you're still, in the town administrator's recommendations, fifty-four thousand. Both the last year was forty-six thousand, so you're still getting a little bit of increase, but not as grand an increase.
Um, I think part of the problem was in the past, we couldn't fill, we didn't get enough kids. So, you know, uh, that's where the gap was. That's my reading of it. Um, obviously we'd like to fill it up as much as possible. Uh, you can get as many, many hands up in with weed whackers and everything else as we can. They also do trash pickup. You send them out to go dig up the trash. On the weekends.
Sometime we should do weekends.
Sometime, yes, we do.
Or do it.
All right. Sewer Enterprise Fund, four forty. Again, Will, what great timing, the day that they're out there designing the.
Please set it up nationally.
To get a common title and accomplishment on the day.
Yeah, we, we are continuing forward with the North Situate sewer expansion. We're in the design phase right now, so we're out there doing field investigation for our engineering firm, what it's firm. Uh, but, you know, back at the treatment plant, the facility, uh, it's been over twenty-five years now since the last plant upgrade. Uh, and that is the lifetime of equipment in the field of sewer. Waste water is just a difficult environment for equipment. Uh, and we're on the marsh there as well, the, the salt air doesn't help us out. Uh, but that does bring us a lot of opportunity as things break down. We build, repair them or replace them to be better and stronger. Uh, last year, we replaced one of our main aeration blowers and several defunct valves. Uh, we now have a high efficiency aeration blower and automated aeration valves to balance out the airflow to all of our process tanks. I'm pleased to say that we secured a grant from Mass D E P to support us in this project, uh, due to the money that we're gonna be saving on electrical costs as well. Uh, we've been doing a lot of updates of records and policies. Uh, last year, we worked with their treasurer collector's office to digitize a number of records that only existed in a very old paper format. Uh, and this year we're gonna be working with the assessor's office to update, uh, property cards to show super status or availability for all the properties in town. Some of the cuts that concern me the most to our budget, uh, we're also losing our seasonal worker for the year. Uh, to me, that, that's a, a big shame to me because that's where I got my start with the town of Situate, so it's, it's sad to see that position unfunded. Uh, I'm also concerned about the cuts to overtime as the vast majority of overtime is demand response to emergencies or storm response. Um, I am pleased to say that we did get our emergency fund, uh, funded. Um, so that'll be there if we do have an emergency, uh, but you will see a lot of cuts across the board. Um, it's just, you know, things are becoming a lot more expensive and involved in today's world. Uh, you may have seen, uh, the electrical company out there replacing telephone poles across town, which is, is great. Uh, but all the infrastructure on those poles, like the fiber optic cables, that need to be relocated. Um, and sewer uses fiber optic to communicate with some of its pump stations, so we, we get to chip in to pay for that. Uh, and things like that will continue and, and we don't see many costs coming down unfortunately.
So, Will and his merry band have been doing a great job. Uh, they've really been making an effort to, um. To do I N I, anytime we're paving a street, they get into the manholes ahead of time, they put in new manhole covers, they get pulled down manhole covers that are waterproof. Uh, make improvements. He's always pushing Mike, gonna schedule meeting, when are you doing this? So he can have time to order the gastics that he needs. Um, who's always looking out for our I N I areas, if they get calls, out to people's homes or whatever, they try to evaluate what the services are. Uh, we'll look at that system, uh, replacing the sewer services as they go. Uh, if they're over a certain age or if they're outdated, which has been a huge help in the I N I battle. Um, and we'll just keep, we'll keep fighting it out. We had a, a manhole this year on Egypt Beach that we could leave. A lot of we had flowing in and clearly to use one of our subcontractors to develop, rebuild that manhole box on that. Uh, so that was a huge one. We also have a couple that are coming out. We've got a private manhole that's, um, on a beach. And it actually floods during, sometimes hides and comes in. And what we did is we approached, we'll approach owners and ask them if they can switch over to. Uh, a different type of system, maybe they could go to a pump system or something like that. They kinda didn't wanna do it, so we've worked with legal on trying to figure out the best way to go forward on that, because it's all on private property. Uh, and how we can get that straightened out. So that's, uh, just a couple of little issues we've been dealing with, uh, kind of weekly basis, monthly basis. The I N I project should be going out the bid soon, uh, which is gonna be exciting because we've got the trucks hopefully backing in, doing the I N I cleaning and lining as well as fixing up some service work. And reducing some of that inflow and infiltration, so that hopefully we can bank it up so that we can do one set to a one answer time.
How many other communities do you think do the, um, the inspection of, well, the home cell, the sewer connection? So it's gotta be one of the most capital things done. Or do you, do, do a lot of communities do that, or one of the omen ones, or I'm just, I mean, you may not know that, but, um.
I haven't surveyed nearby towns, but I do recall getting contacted by a few of them after we implemented the policy. Uh, it sounded like it was popular amongst other town planners. Uh, I'm just not sure where they are on, uh, implementing.
Once it was started, it kinda spread through with some of the engineering firms and I think other towns have started to pick it up. Um, that, that we did it and they kinda used our example going forward. Um, it was kinda, Will and I were chatting one day and Will said, I wish we could do something. I'm like, oh, you know, why, why don't we? You know what I mean? It was just, he had some ideas about what we could do. It was pretty innovative by Gary.
Work out well.
Yeah, yeah. So we give Will plenty of kudos for that.
But it must have something to do with whether or not you're operating a waste water treatment plant in your town or whether you're in the M W R A or whatever that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no way to track it if you're in M W R A, so, you know.
Well, I, I guess my point is, we have a real reason to wanna make sure. And I think when you make the argument to people that you have to have your septic system inspected and it hasn't passed, kind of, for you to be able to transfer the ownership of property only since there, that the same type of rule would apply to people who are on, uh, public sewers.
Right, and, and Will met with a lot of realtors also. One of the things he brought up is the more I N I we can get out of the system, the more homes can hook up to sewer and the more properties you have to sell. And I think that was a selling point because they didn't realize that they thought we would just spend trying to appease them. You know, and I think that worked out pretty well.
So, yeah.
Uh, another question.
I have a question regarding I N I. Is the I N I we have planned enough for North Situate? Will we get to the time when it's time to dig in North Situate and we have enough?
You know, fingers crossed. I, I hate to sound like that. I N I is kinda, a lot of it depends on the groundwater and, and there's a lot of different things and how many other people to tie in, how many other buildings tie in in that meantime. Um, the thing that scares us a lot is the accessory dwellings. Um, you know, the future accessory dwellings dying into, into sewer and we don't know the effect, the effect that'll have. Uh, what, you have thoughts going on that or?
Uh, we do see a lot of development in Situate. Um, I understand there's new accessory dwelling laws coming out soon. Um, and we, we adjusted our, our fee policy to address that. But, yeah, as, as more people use the sewer system, that does use up our capacity. And, and that is our goal right now is to restore and maintain as much capacity as possible, uh, given the pendant expansion in North Situate.
So our fingers crossed, because we don't know what we're gonna see till we open up the manholes and start cambering the pipes. One big.
Okay, so.
The big pickup is the new water treatment.
Yeah.
It's forty, fifty thousand gallons a day that we're putting in the water treatment plant out. It won't be put in for that house. A line which is sixty percent. North Situate's about a hundred and twenty thousand gallons, so maybe fifty thousand from that.
That's full.
Full, full buildup, right.
You just did the, this is.
So between the, the two of them. You know, firing anybody coming into the building on the seaside seaside with forty-five units, that's the goal.
I'm pretty confident it will fit.
Okay, that's better than fingers crossed.
I, I hate to say it'll fit, it'll have something come up later on, so I guess.
But I'm not big on like class and thinkers, hoping and praying. So if there's a follow-up in wishing, wishing hope and pray in, uh, my thought is, should we be doing more I N I? So that we are beyond fingers crossed, hoping and praying, we are able to deliver on North Situate when we're ready.
Good, seven hundred and twenty days.
In seven hundred and twenty.
We would, we would love to do more I N I, but you get to a point that how much can we do all at once? You know, we're doing a lot at once. We, we did it last time with the two-year project. It's, it's kind of hard to have that many crews in working at once because it, it's just oversight and, and everything else. We, we have a good section this time coming up, but should we follow up with another project that will, yes. Should we continue following up with I N I, yes.
So, one of the serve, you know, there was a prioritization of where do you think the biggest bedding is gonna be? And that's been a model of, and we're on sort of the next big bedding project now. But as Kevin pointed out, like, when they find no, uh, manhole cover that's, you know, just silted and exposed, that's true.
No, I remember it was in the Capitol, but then it wasn't for next year. I'm just curious if it's something we should be doubling down on now, knowing we're seven hundred days away from. If we can do that. It's just a question.
Yeah.
Because now's the time to think about that.
Think reality, I mean, certainly one reality that's gonna be, we'll have, you know, between the water treatment plant and this second phase of priority I N I projects that can, that develop, that we can pass it. No one's, it's not, no, it's seven hundred days, there's not gonna be full buildup in our Situate. So we do have the opportunity to, you know, to work, and that's what we've been wanting.
My understanding of seven hundred days would be the state allowing us to do it, which is based on capacity. So in order for the state to say, we're gonna allow you to start digging, we need to have that capacity then, that day. But that's how, you tell me differently, that's how.
One of the things, one of the things we would present with the engineering firms is this is our I N I plan. This is our plan with the water treatment plant, we're gonna eliminate this amount and then make available this amount. This was in our old plan and this is gonna help, you know, the Gulf River, it's gonna help this. And, and that's what we would present to, to D E P to do that. But, you know, I, I can't tell you how they're, how they're gonna react.
And there was some talk, I mean, and you, but you can present a phased plan, right? You could, you don't have to do the full, that's what we're doing.
That's what.
The, uh, because you can adjust the business history.
I was just gonna say, you could start in the core, but it just, it, it depends how flexible regulations are. Right, yeah, I mean, that's a great question.
We, we are preparing for a, a multimillion dollar construction phase of I N I in the near future. Uh, you, you did point out that our, our rolling I N I capital was, was denied this year. Uh, these larger construction projects have great return. They, they remove a large amount of, uh, inclosure infiltration. Uh, after this next large construction phase, we've essentially targeted all of our low hanging fruit. So we'll probably take a pause on the multimillion dollar projects. Uh, and I'll be seeking for the couple hundred thousand dollars to do some more investigations to, to look for more, more fruit to be born.
Before I forget, you, Jimmy, you have that, you don't have that great presentation that they did, right, two years ago? She kept us, you know? About your, the plan, like the rollout, what we've done and, and the, the cost of, you know, the dollar per gallon saved for the rest. Did you get that precise? But no, we should, we should see that. That's good. All right. Any questions on, I guess, Water Enterprise? You're up. Uh, want to do some highlights?
Yes, there's a lot, so people need to hear the good stuff.
Yeah, so, uh, we were able to hire a licensed water treatment plant operator. Which has been a challenge in the past.
Yeah.
Um, not that movies don't work out, because I was a newbie right now. Um, so he came here with a T-two, he studied, he got his T-four, um, along with Jim Bottom. Um, both of them have, have taken a course, the T-four course, I know they've scheduled their tests. So currently, right now, in treatment and distribution, we have, I've been here fifteen years and this is the most licensed staff we've had. We have two T-fours, soon to be four T-fours, D-three. Um, the distribution staff only got, uh, an upgraded license.
Is it, is it a B-three, right?
Yes.
He's great, he's studying for his B-four.
Yep.
One of the hiring requirements we've put in is that any person that works any labor, even if it's just a labor, is required to get their D-one distribution licenses is part of their job description. So, um, which is good. It's opened us up because we're, we're becoming a lot more licensed. We're gonna be, we'll be a lot better than, we have that many people that are both of us.
Do we ever get a license?
We do. We work with them, we'll send them to a class and then, uh, you know, they'll, they'll pass the test. Um, if they don't pass the test the first time, we only pay once for the test. So if they have to take it four times to pass it, you know, study harder, right?
Well, I'm very hopeful that, that we staff and the new certifications will stay that way, especially transitioning into a new treatment plant to have experienced operators and their appropriate licenses of pay plus, that hasn't always been the case in the past. So we had four staff members, including myself, um, became certified for cross-connection survey and backflow inspection. So the hope there is, um, we're gonna do some bolt ride-alongs with the company that does the backflow inspections and the surveys. Um, you have to do that to maintain your license, but now that we're certified, we wanna do that. So possibly we could take over some of that responsibility in the future. We've got a new treatment plant, hopefully that runs smoother and less things break on a consistent basis. Maybe we can, we need some of our own staff to take care of that.
If I can cut you off for one sec. One of, one of the great things is by having that cross-connection license, more people getting cross-connection licenses. If they're out at home, if they're out in business, they can recognize that somebody has a cross-connection um, in, in what such damage it, it could happen. When you go back into the days that cross-connection requirements came in place because there were like funeral homes that were doing a bombing and a water break could come out and would potentially, you know, bring, bring the material back out of the building years and years ago. So, um, that's, that's the key, why cross-contamination, cross-connections are so important and they, and they really have to be paid in spurs.
Um, we have done a great job, uh, lap the base for replacing the old meters with the new radio meters that, you know, eventually almost all the meter cables will be drive-by's. That's where we hired a new meter reader. Replacing those makes better customer service, which can do better data logging. You can, you can spot leaks for residents sooner. It also allows the meter reader to make reads faster. So the meter reader is helpful training, training with the distribution staff to be able to do some of those do's to. Uh, the big thing was, I mean, kudos to I T on this and the office staff, all the staff. When they had that truck destroy the water department office. Um, we were up and running pretty much the next day at town hall. I T really got on that and switched everything over really quick. Nora and Linda were great, they moved into the new environment, you really didn't see any pickups in service. Um, so that was, everybody did a really good job of that.
Quite a, quite a good facility, such a great job.
They did fix that up. It's very nice. It's the nicest looking part of the whole water department office. Correct, and, and Highway, uh, or, yeah, Highway.
I think I'm.
Put some ballers out in front and protect it in case, you know, that happens again. I heard they were gonna strike her up. Um, another, another big project, um, I'm sure everybody's got the letters, lead service line in Florida. Um, we contracted with a firm, uh, but the office staff still had to do a lot of work with that. A lot of information. Uh, the distribution staff on all the appointments and every work order. We were doing this previous to this year, but they have a space to, every time they do a work order, you're in the house, do a meter change, check the private service line so we can check that off. Um, if you, and you can't just say not let, or, yeah, why not, you, you have to identify with actuators.
And that's a federal requirement, that's, everybody's water service has to be identified and it's kind of out the, out in Michigan and some of the other things. So that's federal requirements that came out. So typically that's why they had that scan sheet they were able to set up and then you could scan it and then take a picture of your water service and submit it, log it in.
Do physicians have to report positive lead tests among children when they detect it? Because it would seem to me as though that would be pretty easy if, if you detect a child goes back with a, a lead problem.
It could be daycare, you know, it could be the, yeah, it, it would be.
Well, but it would be easy to let the towns check.
We've done, we've done a really good job because we've replaced so many water lines. When we saw a lead service or a galvanized service, we would typically replace it, talk to the owner and have them replace it all the way back. Or we sometimes, if it was a lead line, would replace it all the way back to the house and eliminate it entirely because we're responsible for any lead that comes through the water at that, in that source point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that's a big problem here in Situate, although I'm sure we've seen a lot of lead ink in some of the old houses, but it just, I'm just curious to know if anyone reports back to towns.
Yeah, we, we've done a good job. We, we've got rid of most of the, most of the cast iron, most of the duck, you know, cast iron. I think, you, you know, we discovered a piece the other day, uh, off Oceanside Drive, I think, on K. In which we have to do some more investigation on, um, but that, that doesn't mean it's bad. We, but when we go through there, it's an older pipe and we have a lot of that, so, um, kind of surprised there.
And then the initial, the initial survey of what was known, uh, was zero lead and five galley. Uh, there's still a lot of unknowns, but we have to verify them, but I don't think we're gonna find one. And just, just as an aside, uh, children, when we do the lead and copper samples at residences, there's a rotating schedule for all daycares and schools that, that's part of that mandate. The D E P is part of cycle testing, so.
Yep. One of the other areas I wanna give kudos for Eric and his crew. Um, Cat and Phil, which are the assistants and dependents, have done a great job as well as Adam. Um, Adam's the working foreman and he's been doing a fantastic job hunting leaks. I don't know how we find all these leaks. He's pulling them up, but he seems to have a leak every day that he's repairing somewhere. Um, almost like he's got all those little dogs that can step wrong when he finds it. Even the turnaround, like we had some hydrants and some bad locations, some bad caves that we discovered over on that Gulf Aquatic, we were able to get a lot of that stuff knocked out of the decks, which is gonna be a huge improvement for the water, water quality on the screen. So we're, we're pretty happy about that.
Great.
Uh, we're continuing with the flushing program, uh, mostly in the spring. The fall is if we can, uh, but we were actually in hot condition. Got to a severe drought condition this fall. Um, people normally associate droughts with summer, but this one extended well into the fall. Um, so we really can't be out there flushing in that, in those conditions. Uh, then the biggest, uh, project obviously is the new water treatment plant. Uh, we're having weekly meetings with contractors and the hospital headquarters. They're, they're a little ahead of schedule, so.
Yeah.
So they say, can they go away?
I'm still surprised on it because I, I mean, in my mind, I think it could have been done sooner, but we're, I guess, it's the luxury of some of the equipment and everything else where it falls. Um, we, we, we do the contract and we go out on site, expect it. Uh, every concrete four, um, we send one of our guys out, they go out, they review full, full yet. They make sure they've got round heaters out there. They've actually got them connected to the shawms so the state log is there so we can see the entire heat full time after the concrete is pulled and needing sensors and make sure that it stays up after the job. Um, the contractor has two machines out there. And basically what they do is they're like big generators, but all they do is heat, um, some fluid that goes through these tubes. They wrap the tubes up and they cover them up in, in, um, concrete blankets and it keeps the air temperature as well as the ground temperature up so that they can't pour the concrete this time. They're running, you know, until the concrete reaches its seven-day span that it needs, so it doesn't freeze. And it's, so far it's been, so far it's been all good. So, um, the water treatment plant has been taking, uh, a lot of time staff-wise because our typical meetings, I go, Eric goes, Sean goes, one of the engineers goes so that they can follow the group schedule, Jim goes, um, but we're really watching them tight, trying to push that along as much as we can. Um, so far things have been going pretty good. We've got a couple minor changes, not even changes, but just minor things with conduit and, you know, I keep saying we wanna have this door connected, you know, with the badges and changing a couple of little things around, but it's really been, so it's, it's moving on.
Not, not to like quiz anyone, but going back and pulling these. Not, not to like quiz anyone, but going back and putting these all that, maybe Jim will jump in um, on usage, just water usage from the town. Jim and I talked about this a little bit. We're using more or less water than we did ten years ago.
Less.
So.
We've saved, we were, I mean, we were significant at one point.
The gallons.
When I first started here, we were, I think we had over twenty percent loss in water. Which is, which is a huge number, by D E P standards, you're supposed to be under ten percent. I think we were at eight point nine or seven point nine last year.
Through eight point.
Eight point nine, so we've eliminated that significantly and you've gotta figure out how much water was used over the year, were we over the whole, the whole year.
So from from two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen, the town averaged five hundred ninety-one million gallons of water a year. Since two thousand sixteen, we're averaging four hundred eighty-eight million gallons of water. It's not a total usage, I guess, whatever, so we're down on over a hundred million gallons a year.
With a lot more users.
A hundred million.
With all the pipe replacements and all the.
You say those hundred million gallons of water are all this worth, a year?
A year. With more people.
I was wondering about this.
Cause there's, when Kevin says leaks, there's leaks and then there's
Leaks.
main, giant main breaks that used to happen in the past, so.
Yeah, we have a main break every, once every week, obviously, and obviously it's getting ridiculous, but and and that shows when, that's why we always have to maintain our pipe and do so much every year so that we don't get a position for, because it's getting ridiculous.
See, a point one year. Yeah, no, it's it's a significant savings.
Well, I think also the irrigation issue has really helped. I mean, we have an irrigation system, we haven't used now in fifteen years. We don't turn it on, we don't want, I'm sure there are a lot of people in that situation.
And let's not forget the water rebate program.
Let's not forget.
Just coming up next.
Nice answer.
Any other questions on that?
Good transition.
Perfect transition.
Any other questions about our project?
Okay, so saving people money, this is good to do.
So this is always great too, so, um, day, um, there's been ninety-three closed washer rebates, sixty-eight dishwasher rebates, ninety-nine toilet rebates.
That's in six months, right? Cause that's the date this year, right?
No, since the inception of the program.
Oh, since the inception of the program, okay, so that's.
Second year, third year?
It's a year and a half, right?
Or twenty-four.
So eighteen months.
Twenty-four.
Eighteen months, nice.
Eighteen months.
Are they coming waves? Or like they're pretty common?
It's pretty consistent, I see them.
They come in waves to me because they're assigned to all the projects and I'm not gonna blast it, I'd say way.
But it's good, it's, yeah, it's on a weekly basis, it's still, still consistent coming in. So, yeah, will you, will your thoughts on the whole program, working, like it, don't like it, save and?
We we love it, anything we can do is save water, I mean, you know how precious water is and we just went over with Peter, how hard it is to find water. Uh, you know, I I think the pipe replacement program is huge and you gotta figure our average, we're eight point nine percent. Um, Humrock kills us because Humrock's probably about twenty-two percent of wastewater, but that's marsh field water. Um, so, you know, it is, it's.
Expensive.
It it's expensive, yeah, it is expensive, um, but that's, it's like a rat's nest with all the pipes everywhere and it's it's pretty tricky.
That's what pulls the other account of water.
That's what pulls our account of water, yeah, because then we include that in our calculations. But otherwise, we're doing good in, I guess, mainly, you could say.
Because we maintain the distribution system versus marsh field.
Correct.
So we're supposed to.
Yeah.
I just even, like, I know when we started the program, we're like, oh, it'll save, you know, each toilet is'll save whatever gallons per day. Did we, like, why would you, just, I want to give to you, really thinking for investment of fifty-five thousand dollars?
I think the investment's small, probably far away to return over the years because of typical clients who should get fifteen years out of it if it's more water fishing, you know, um, it adds up.
It's great.
Yeah.
I got my sense.
It's like two ga, like, you said, two gallons per. The use of one, it's like two gallons per flush on Avenue rolls you knew and it was like, you know, it's like eleven thousand gallons per toilet.
Right, we had done that sort of battery envelope, but it was, um, I did send you and Jim a grant caller.
Yes.
From D E P, I think, um, that I thought might be worth seeing if we could actually get funds for funding the state to put into this program, to be that.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be slowing down.
No, no, and if we can offer more opportunities to residents to do this, it only helps.
Well done, that's very nice, thank you, not good to have, got the numbers. Any tweaks you wanna make? Make fifty dollars away and do like, uh, uh, shower heads or something, something different now?
Well, Mass Safe gives out free shower heads if you if you ask, they give all that stuff out. Um, you know, I I think it's working out well the way it is now and. Can't think of anything to add to it.
No, it's definitely working out. And save overall, like, everything's more expensive.
Yeah.
All right, next is. Lost my voice.
U P W Capital Projects.
Well, Capital Projects.
Trucks, trucks, trucks.
Plains, trains and the.
Thank you. Do we need to add anything else?
Yes, you do.
We do.
Water capital.
Oh, yeah.
Nice try.
We'll move back to the end. Did that break before? I'm just gonna, a hundred million gallons? All right, we'll do trucks then.
Okay, so I probably bombarded you with more information than you thought was imaginable about trucks. I, I.
Very thorough.
I get a little passionate about about our our snow defense and what we do for snow fighting and everything else. Um, one of the things that we've done over the past couple of years is we used to have a lot more contractors and what we've been able to do is as we hire people, we require them to plow. Um, as I said, when I originally started here, um, we had water here, sewer here, transfer station. Now, when people hire in over the past few years, they're required to plow, that's a given, everybody plows. I don't care if it's a two fifty truck, we get everybody out. We used to have a lot of contractors working for us and we used to have a lot of contractors doing sand. We've taken over all the sanding and everything ourselves. Part of the way we've done that is we've increased the size of some of our trucks, we've got more heavy duty vehicles. Um, we had major, major hampering, um, in two thousand fifteen when we hit with all that snow. Um, we just didn't have the equipment to push the snow anymore. Um, and we ran into two issues, so we've beefed up our fleet a bit and we've gone to some heavy duty trucks, so if we do get hit with something like that again, um, we'd be able to handle it a little better. And we've, we've outfitted a lot of our trucks so that they can also sand, so we have no contractors sanding for us anymore. It's all us doing our own sanding. So, um, we have three items, uh, through Capital and the first one is we have a two thousand five international truck for the highway department. The truck was due to be replaced last year. Um, we put it on hold for the reason that we were getting the, um, bucket truck for the tree truck. And we didn't, you know, wanna put that hit Capital fault, so we we voted or spoke among ourselves and decided to go with the tree truck that had more, that we need. Um, and we figured we could get a little longer out of that truck. So, the issue we have now, when we originally put the truck in, um, they failed inspection due to, um, due to rust, due to the subframe. Our mechanics, and mechanic is the one that came up to us and said this truck should be replaced. They did a great job on the truck, I can't say enough, they took the wheels off, um, they scraped down, they painted the rims to make them look pretty good. They also undercoated the truck and this is something we're doing with all of our trucks. We undercoated with an oil product and what that does, it helps prevent the rust starting from salt because they're putting up salt themselves and that's, that's, that does a lot of damage to, um, to the trucks with rust. And also with the seawater, because we do look at seawater, um, especially during flooding areas. So, um, that's that truck that I can, you know, I I don't wanna say we put lipstick on it, paid cleaning truck up the best we could and, um, got it to pass inspection and then the guys from Capital came out after we cleaned the truck up, they said, wow, this truck looks great. Like, oh, God, you know, I'm like, guys, you know, because it it, you know, there's a lot of rust and everything else and the whole undercarriage and everything, subframe is a bad shape. So, um, that's what I can tell you about that truck and I I gave you guys a lot of information, I'm glad we, glad to talk about it.
Is that the eight wheel dump truck that Capital planning was going out about how we don't need one? Yeah.
Yes, yes.
That's what we're talking about.
Penwell, Penwell.
Penwell, forget it.
And this is the, this is the one that has four hundred and six.
Billion, billion.
That four hundred and six thousand.
It has hours, mileage, it's, it's.
Which is equivalent.
It's the equivalent mileage, yes.
Six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven hours, which is equivalent, four hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty miles.
And this is a two thousand five, this is from the Bush administration.
This is a twenty year old truck.
So, I, seriously, it it is.
Can we change, if we don't get it, can we change the route before they call? For who didn't have it?
Just, I didn't hear that.
Can you go upstart?
Um, explain on the route. Just, does this truck all more than, you mentioned the stuff from the dump and snow. What about the rocks and boulders that wind up on the streets down in Humrock and up in Sand Hills?
Sometimes, sometimes they're involved in that, yes, it 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 depends because if it's all every rock, we wanna get a rock truck to do it. We're doing too much anti-stromic trucks, so we've got a specialty rock truck that's got a hot bed.
Well, I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make here is that whenever the issue comes up about snow removal, people fail to understand that we don't just have to remove snow from situated roads we have, and parking lots, we have to remove sand and gravel and rocks and in some cases, boulders. Um, so, you know, when we talk about snow removal, it sounds like it's not a big deal, but at least in my opinion, it's a big deal here.
We we feel, well, I feel it is, my mechanic feels it is, Mike feels it is, um, and that's why they put this truck forward. It, it, when you need it, you need it.
Right.
And, and you know, sometimes in the summer, it's not as busy, um, but when you need the truck, you know, you need it. Um, one of the things they said is we could go with a smaller truck and one of the things I I brought up, the you don't save a lot by going with a small truck, the other thing is, um, police likes, like the larger truck because just as what happened in New Orleans, we park these trucks when we have Halloween, Heritage Days, we we block the roads with the bigger trucks and in in the bigger, bigger is better, I mean, we're not getting triaxles, we'll just, we'll just the next size up and then you go eighteen wheeler, but we're going with a ten wheeler. And the guys take fantastic care of it, if you, if you went out and looked at our two thousand seventeen Mac, you'd think it was brand new because they, they really do do a good job on it.
So has it passed inspection at this point?
It did.
So it got past the.
But that's a year.
Well, I'm just asking.
Every year, it's happening.
Every year, you have, I like, I understand, no, no, I was just.
You're not, you're not gonna need to order this, this has to be ordered, so you're not gonna get it.
I might get it for a year.
Well, you're not ordering it until July.
Yeah.
Correct, so this is a matter of making the decision for.
Correct, I was just.
And maybe this thing will last, so we get the new one, but we're gonna need.
I guess I was just surprised to hear that you fooled the inspectors with a code of pain.
We didn't fool anybody, we just cleaned it up, we cleaned it up.
They write up the code.
I don't wanna hurt labor, but we had a water drop down Ocean Side Drive a couple of weeks ago, we had one of the big trucks, one guy, the big truck, taking the material away and everything in the hole, loved the big truck, it's two guys, two trucks, to move that material, so it's.
No, I'm I'm in favor of this, I'm just, I was kind of astonished that it actually passed inspection.
So we're all in on this truck.
I'm in favor of it.
All right, we're pro this truck.
I'm pro that truck, I'm pro truck.
Thank you, all right, I'll leave no more. There was a, no, I I will say that it was a good question, maybe a smaller truck, I think.
I think it's a good, um, argument, um, good information.
I, I did write it out.
I mentioned some of the other towns and was telling them the age of the truck and they was stunned, you know, we still had it off the shelves.
It's two thousand fifteen, that's one, thank you, two thousand five.
That's another, practically another century.
All right.
Okay, so the next item we had on the list was a engineering vehicle. Um, and that was the addition of an engineering vehicle. Uh, Sean can address that, the the basic gist of that is we have three engineers and we have two vehicles, so, um, you know, we talked to Capital, one of the things they said is, well, they could drive down the highway line and get another vehicle, but it's, it's not practical, we're not looking for a, was it forty thousand dollars we asked for?
We asked.
Yeah, so what we're looking for is a smaller pickup truck or a smaller, maybe even electric vehicle or something that we could have people go out with. Uh, my biggest concern is having people in their own vehicles out on the road. Um, for example, somebody was watching R A and they were up in a vehicle and ended up in an accident and he came back to us because we didn't have the right lights or right protection on the vehicles. Um, and then the other thing is the guys don't wanna use their own vehicles, going on a construction site with rocks, digging. We've had two instances in the past where a loader hit one of the police vehicles cars and then, you know, something else had occurred. Uh, where where equipment can get damaged very easily, uh, and that's not something that they keep on. The other thing that they can do is they can store all their equipment in there, they, you know, have everything they need when they do it. It's just so inefficient to have a guy come in, get down to another department, borrow a truck and then come back and switch it around. As I said, there's so many projects going on, um, you know, we we need the people out there, I don't want them looking for a truck. And Sean, when do you get to that?
Yeah. So two of our engineers have trucks.
Two out of three, well, we, they share them, they share them.
Yeah, but the other, the third engineer doesn't have a truck.
Correct.
And then a month ago, one was in the shop for two weeks, so we had one.
We shouldn't have, we shouldn't mandate that they use their own vehicles, that's not, that's not.
But we got a three man crew, we need three trucks, we should have three trucks. It's denying work.
It'll affect response.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I also think it just makes sense to have an official pump truck at sites.
Gotta label them.
Somebody's on the civic.
That is true, it does have a situation. Has a blue plate on it.
Yeah, and it just gives you a cert, a certification. Yes.
Solid, stick around that. Um, great, all right, so I think we're.
In my question, going back to the, oh, you have one question, oh, going back to the I N I, all these things are needed more than additional I N I.
Different buckets.
Different buckets.
All right, this is general fund money, free cash, the I N I is coming out of the small budget. So if you wanted to do more I N I, you wanted to grow that money. Right now, the small budget that you look at, it's gonna need a three, four percent increase just to meet what you have. If you want to do any more, that's gonna be reflected in the rates.
So can we have that conversation?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So you can say, geez, we really could put that sum of hell back.
Yeah, no, it's just to make sure we're asking all the questions so that we're ready to go.
And and that helps because when they're doing the I N I work, you know, we have one of our engineers go out you know, check on them a couple of times a day just to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to. You know, check on them a couple of times a day just to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing as well as looking for the leaks and making sure what's.
All right.
All right.
Just like we're getting some trucks.
And I think it's good rationale again, the backup is here.
Yeah, that was good, yeah. All right, now with Water Capital.
Well, we did have.
Well, the third one, the famous MS four. That was phase seven or whatever.
Was he here? Really?
Well, that was. By Capital.
MS four.
Keep going back and forth.
MS four phase, is this one?
Seven year. Oh, we're on the seventh.
We're on.
I have another question. What are you going to remove out of the operating? So I have an idea as to what you're removing.
INI.
So.
All seven, is that?
Uh, you can explain it. So essentially, the issue is Capital thinks that this is a misplaced lineup and should be under the operating. Well, I disagree with their, their thought on that. I, that's why I did, we're all set. We can move on. Capital, correct. Right from.
Resection of law.
Yeah, rescission of law.
Are we holding on these, or we just have to discuss? Yeah, all right. So the next one, you did your, the Water Capital.
Yeah, so this is, uh, who wants to see it up? Kevin or Jim or?
So I'll, I'll do, we've been looking at the water budget, what the rates have been going up, what's happening. We have, what are we saying? What's, what are those? That, how is it authorized? Over what then? Over twenty million dollars authorized on issue one. We just can't do it.
So for example, the Humrock Water Main Replacement. That was what, six million?
That was a six million dollar project that's now a four, nine million dollar project. You also have the reservoir project, which went from three to almost nine million dollars and that stuck in permanent hell. We have the Dolan Well Field, which is now up on eight, nine million dollars. We have the continued pipe replacement, which is three million dollars a year. And on and on and on and on. We have water tanks, uh, two water tanks. There are six, seven million dollars for the two of those. Doing this off the top of my head, sorry. And the, the rates just can't do it. We just can't do all these things. So I think the one we're looking at right now is, I believe, the Humrock Water Main.
And we take water. And, and be clear, I want you guys to explain this, some of the rationale of it. There's other ways. Other ways to skin the cat, I guess. There's other ways that you can get it. You can do it in a kind of a phased way. You don't have to do it all at once.
One of the things we discussed that, that Andrew's bringing up is we said, maybe we could start doing the water line down in Humrock. Is, is one of our, out of our yearly project update, maybe we could do, um, you know, some maining. Instead of piecing, piecing sections of it off as, as we go. You know, we'd like, I, I don't want to say we'd like to ignore it, but we know we have an old main and we know when the, we know we're going to have rates and problems. And maybe what we could do is allocate some money, we're sort of doing our line replacements, not replacing.
We do three million dollars, you know, instead of doing three million all up in situ prop, we do a million down on Humrock and replace a million. And then the next year, we do another million. Because we've spent over thirty million on pipe replacement in situ, I call it such a problem.
Such a problem.
Situ prop in the last ten years. We haven't spent any Humrock or pipe replacement. But to do the entire project all at once, when you do the math on how much water we're losing, what we're going to save by putting it in, it's like a hundred years before the, the math works. So I think it's something we would, we would take it.
Well, like, what are you talking about? We're spending three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. I guess, six point three.
Six point three million for the construction, too, James.
Oh, okay.
Now, this is over four time.
Okay, all right.
So we're still going back and forth on the reservoir, be the Dolan. Well, we will come here with one of those. I don't think we can do both. They're, they're too expensive to do both. But we're still having conversations on it. Which one might be better? And a lot of that's going to be, how would we treat Dolan? We know this, we fasten the Dolan. What would it look like if we tried to pump it back with a plant and was putting a treatment at the Dolan Well Field? So we're still kind of looking at those numbers. But the reservoir, uh, we have the permit, the fact that we're destroying wetlands by raising the reservoir, even though we're making more wetlands by raising the reservoir. So, uh, that's, uh, just one of those chasing our tails, we have to say, regulatory agencies. But we know we have to do some work on the dam and the gate down there, so we're, we're still kind of going back and forth on this. But I think there was, uh, pretty much agreement that the Humrock project, we just, we can't do it as a, as a whole project all at once. We have to kind of take it in pieces.
So Jim, what is the benefit of the Humrock? I mean, it, it, does it have any benefit?
So it, it actually does, and I, I can address that.
Okay.
Because the, the pipe will fail. The pipe is old. It, it will fail in certain locations. So if we can replace some of the main that goes, you know, we can't just ignore it forever. Because, um, the main down there, it's actually pretty close to the houses in a couple of sections of the north section of Humrock. We'd like to bring it back out onto the road and then try to address it that way and get the water line off there and get it straightened out.
So the best thing to do down there would be to replace the main?
Start with the main. And, and a lot of what's leaking is services. And we ran into the same problem down in the Glades, want to replace the water line down in Glades. It was kind of like the water west. People were putting in water lines and connecting to water lines, you know, all over the place.
There's a lot of Mickey Mouse down there, too.
Yeah.
Down there at Fourth Cliff, there was a series of houses where they ran a line across the street. Instead of running a line for every house, they ran it to a secondary line that was two inches. And there were five houses.
Five houses.
Off the two-inch main, which is like five houses trying to suck through a straw all at the same time. There's no, no water per se at all. So we, we were down and did a fix on that. But if two of them took showers at the same time, there's no water. So there's a lot of that that we have to clean up. And we do know.
Going in the ocean.
Right. We do know that we're, we're losing a lot of water in Humrock, that we, we have to stop.
And as we said earlier, it's expensive water.
Yeah, it's chippeland.
So, right, the water main, yeah, the water box, that one. That's a lot of expensive water.
It kind of, we, we had, we lost, I think, forty thousand gallons when Fourth Cliff went. We've asked Marshfield for a payment. I think it's happened later than that.
Why am I laughing about that?
Yeah, I mean, if we have a breakdown, then we're going to go, we're going to go fix whatever we have to fix. We can take it in chunks.
Motion.
Do you need that?
No, you can do it.
Discussion.
Yeah, to include, to include that rescission, that rescission out of that. Because that's going to tell me.
We have an article, because we just put it into the article.
So it's actually, so it's actually a total of, uh, plus almost six point seven, right?
Right.
Any other, before we were saying, almost seven million, any other questions?
No, I think, I mean, we think that we should know that we're in the position of being, do this, keep this, the desk that Jim mentioned about really addressing the problem areas that we are both seeking and saving and loss in the community and the groundwater to. So I feel comfortable in this, because I wouldn't have been six years ago because we were still.
Different vision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, um, I think knowing that we're, can now turn our attention to systematic, slow replacement. I think we're in a good place for that.
I just hope our, our rates.
It's just one of the waters.
It's across the increase of this. It helps even out that, that debt service.
Yeah, right. It helps even it out.
Yeah.
So we don't. Without always preference.
But I, I hope, and I'm not trying to, um, focus on Humrock, but I, but I'm hoping we're going to be able to address whatever, uh, concerns the residents of Humrock have about that we're not just taking the six million dollars away, but we do have a.
Well, you have a plan.
A plan, yeah. So, because I wouldn't want to leave them thinking they're high in price.
You know, and some of them, the, the some of them, central lab is not very big. And if you're going to replace all of central lab, it's going to have a huge impact on this summer for probably two years. This way, it would probably be a little less destructive. The people down there are doing it in chunks. It's supposed to have the whole road just dug up and.
Right.
Blasting away.
It's better than.
The one who replaced that, I'd love to polarize the road and straighten it out a little bit. Get to the, get to the motion.
Sounds expensive.
All right, Kevin's getting tired.
No, I didn't, we, we.
We want to talk about easements, don't we?
All right, take a motion.
Move to, uh, move to move include, move to move include.
Include.
In the debt rescission article, uh, the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special town meeting, the Humrock Water Main, the Humrock Water Main's design and engineering unborrowed amounts of three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars approved in Article Three T ATM for two thousand nineteen. And Humrock Water Main Construction for six point three million dollars approved in the Article Three N, N Annual Town Meeting in April twenty twenty-two.
Want to go, Mark? Sarah, see all those in favor? Uh, unanimous. All right.
Big ball.
See wall repair.
So we would like to table this one. We have only easements, but one. The one easement that's outstanding is the person that passed away. And I believe they're actually very dead. We reached out with family, they're interested in getting it squared away. They did send something in that he had signed prior to passing, but it wasn't notarized. So we can't accept that recorded. So his trustee will have to sign it also in kind of the, of the notary in, in getting squared. But we're just, we're just not comfortable awarding a contract of that size without having a.
Yeah, that's.
Can we bring it around to be, is that, can we?
We're hoping in two weeks. I've reached out to the company already and I told them what's going on. If we have one easement issue, the person that passed away. We have ninety days in this contract to get it squared away, so we're still waiting, right? And, you know, hopefully in two weeks, we're hearing saying we have everything we need.
Great. Very much. And debates about other issues.
Thank you as much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. So I'm willing to test. My son is sick, so. It's at the Kevin Cafferty meeting.
You know, we're going to have, we need to be down in meetings like this, we get to talk about all of this stuff.
Good.
INI and all, all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Nancy, you've got the parking lot. Well, did you guys, sooner or later, you want to?
Doing the break is great.
Yeah. Seth, well, it's always more like three minutes. Recession.
Too long.
All right, you next. You're back. Recession next on the agenda is review warrant article language for special legislation for parking.
No. Yeah.
All right.
You weren't doing, um, the base?
Yeah, we had the, we can get the right proposal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Sorry.
I missed that.
Yeah, I didn't send any, uh.
There was a lot of.
Next agenda, back and forth.
I didn't send any, uh.
Okay, yeah, we have this.
Maybe we need a price.
I got it.
All right, parking lot.
So the, um, board had asked this to be an article. I reached out to town council and they provided, uh, a special act text. So, um, as was mentioned, when this was put onto the, um, annual town meeting warrant, we have our own special legislation for penalty fines that was passed in nineteen ninety-one, which is making this a little bit more difficult. So town council wrote something to amend that, um, act, relative on your backup. Uh, and the only question I think that would be for the board, other than are you okay with the language? Is do you want it to be not to exceed one hundred dollars or do you want a higher amount so you don't come back to this again?
So a couple of questions.
Sure.
So statutory, that was one of the things I wanted to know. Is there any statutory limits, what we can?
The statutory limit, um, is a hundred. At the time, I think they did the special legislation, so they could go higher.
Oh, yeah.
Um, is it a hundred? He also sent, because I asked a question and would they get a response from our council?
All right, so we got.
And I, I said it could be on when we discuss this. Not happening.
Yeah. Do you want me to read what he said? Okay, the reason Citra adopted the special, special legislation was the amount of the fine that you want to change. Your special act authorized a fifty-dollar fine for violations back when you adopted your act in nineteen ninety-one. It looks like the prevailing fine structure did not allow fine in excess of fifteen dollars if paid within twenty-one days. Up to a total of thirty-five if not paid before reporting to the registrar. A fine structure that had previously been enacted in nineteen eighty-one. That would also presumably be why Hall also has, not Hall has, similar to us, a nineteen eighty-three special act to set the fine at twenty dollars. And he said to me, that would be the chief reason to continue this way of a special act. Because I asked him, why don't we just say, get out of our business, right? We'll just set the fine. Like, why do we have to always go to, uh, through this special act to set each parking lot? It just seems silly. So the chief reason, um, to continue this special act, if you want to impose fines above twenty-eight and a half's current maximum. So for all violations except parking in a bus stop, the fine starts at fifty dollars and can never exceed seventy-five. Any fine established under the provisions of this section for all other parking violations shall not exceed fifty dollars. Again, if paid within twenty-one days or fifty-five if not. Let's see, what else does he say? Oh, he also says bus, bus stop parking violations are set at a hundred.
Did he, did he mention handicap parking?
Well, that's under a separate, separate restriction, is my understanding. He says, I believe.
That was three hundred.
That was, that is, we, we're up to the highest, that's three.
Right.
He said, I believe you're seeking to increase the fee to a hundred dollars for more than just the bus stop violation. Right now, acceptance of twenty A and a half, I won't get you there. I know that there is a pending legislation to amend twenty A and a half maximum fine to a hundred. But I have no idea if that will go anywhere. So I also thought, well, if we petition them to get rid of it, it could take forever.
Right.
So I, I thought of it as two things, right? Like, we continue on this path. But also, like, why are we even doing this? Why should we, can't we set our own? But it seems like this section twenty A and a half mandates that the state has limits unless you use, unless you petition.
Section twenty A and a half gives you the authority to find, actually.
Collect.
Collect fines, to issue tickets. And it sets it at fifty dollars. The special act says, okay, we're going to do our own fines over and above the fifty dollars. We're going to start our own way. That's all.
But it's not, it has a ceiling on it, right?
Well, we, we put us, we could, we could ask them to two hundred, I don't think they'd give it to us.
Well, my, I think when I looked it up, like, because this was what, nineteen? We accepted twenty-eight and a half in nineteen eighty-two. Nineteen, nineteen eighty-two was fifty dollars?
No, it's fifteen, nineteen.
Nineteen ninety-one was fifty dollars, sorry. So like ninety-one, fifty dollars now is over, is like a hundred and twenty. I think I heard, well, they don't want. So like a hundred, it's more than reasonable. The rationale could be like, well, fifty dollars in nineteen ninety-one is over a hundred dollars now. Plus, like, the, the problem. It's a hundred and what?
Hundred fourteen sixty-three.
Yeah, that was like, we're a hundred and fifty. So, but the problem is it's not a deterrent currently, right? Like, we're having problems with, I've gotten, I've talked to people at specifically mine, right? Like, it's not a deterrent. People are parking there without a security. They just pay the thing. Like, they'd be fifty bucks.
And maybe you want to make it higher than a hundred? Make it a hundred and fifty?
And I think we need to watch what can we run?
I think it's good to be a hundred. I was just wondering, is there any way to like not have to be?
And it's like, I'm afraid of the free the beaches people. If we get too aggressive, we could attract attention that we might not want. If, we don't want to look like we're being coconing. And there are a lot of people who think that it's not right that anyone should have to pay a beach to, or to be able to park at a public beach. So whether, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to say, but.
Yeah.
I think we need to be reasonable. I think we need to be reasonable. And if, if it turns out we have to go through this every, so often, as long as it's sort of a housekeeping thing, who, who cares?
So a hundred is where you're thinking of it?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the fee. Who has it's a hundred dollars, or at least that's the thing.
Then that's, that's a line without accounting to pay that point as well.
The fix, the fix needs to be not the state, we're not gonna do that. So I think we do this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just more curious if you have a slightly thing.
Okay.
Which is ridiculous because ten years from now, we're gonna lies down like on the bus. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Same thing with the, you know, right?
Exactly.
Yes, blame me. Russell, boy, that would tick like.
It's a jam call.
All right, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, so you can go to a Patriots game, you're gonna pay sixty, eighty bucks just to park.
Not anymore. We're just going there now.
They'll pay someone to go.
Concert on a country fest. Uh, yeah, so the hundred dollars is all.
Park on the city, low financial, it's forty-three dollars per mile, right?
Oh, it's like. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
And we're all comfortable with this? Motion.
Right.
I'm ready.
You don't, you don't need to, I'll keep that language in a wrap more.
Now, yeah, motion.
Motion to keep the language.
Yeah, awesome.
Little bit, all right, old gate.
Old gate. I don't expect the board to make a decision on this tonight, but I did wanna provide you, after Jim had, um, gone through it, the request for proposals that's been put together and see how you want to rip apart. Uh, we, I left it open right now, uh, and that may be something you want to close. That it's a sale and or lease, just to provide flexibility. We pretty much decided it, it makes no sense as a sale. But maybe somebody has some great idea, we didn't want to include it. Uh, I tried to reflect, um, what had been recommended by the affordable housing trust and what the board had, um, mentioned. And this is based off, um, the city of Newbury. Newport, city of Newport, sorry. Um, they did, uh, partial, uh, reuse of school building. So it's a very similar project and it was, then this is for twenty twenty-four when they did that. So.
You did a great job.
Yeah, I thought it was really good. Um.
Yeah, agree.
Thank you for my cotton skills.
Very good. So do we have any idea what happened in Newbury?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, they had, they had recommendations on it. Uh, they were a little bit more flexible in theirs that they were willing to give up, say, like what our building is, we want to retain building age and they, they. They were willing to give that up, but would give preference to a developer who would put something else in place to be similar. Theirs was also in a dense downtown neighborhood where ours is not as much.
But I guess like, my question, I'm sorry, question is, do you know if they received?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on, it's on their website.
Okay, and, and do they have, did they make a choice as to?
I don't know if they moved forward yet. I have to go back and check.
Okay. But they do get responses.
Oh, yeah, cause I, I, my original, um, the one that I was looking at originally, when I talked to Jim, was the town of Irving. We did two different ones. Um, and they, um, had very good response. Doesn't mean if we will, but, and that quite kind of in a longer timeline.
I think you will. This could have been my reading.
You, you think so? Uh, that's my big question is what?
It's, it's definitely good, real.
It's, I'm not saying the location, it's like the building's difficult.
It is difficult.
Um, I, there's no two ways around it.
Yeah.
The sex and shield building, the bill buildings.
We're gonna.
You know, people can surprise them fast.
Questions will be, given the restrictions that we want to scale within the original footprint, don't want to make any.
Yeah.
Whether it's economically viable.
Yeah.
I know the group that didn't send a buck was interested in this, but they might tell us, if you wanna limit it to thirty, forty units, the numbers just don't work unless the town wants to pony up. Right. It'll be part money.
But we haven't concluded that, haven't we?
We, we don't know until we.
Until we.
We know, we'll still get that.
No, no.
And there's nothing to say that we accept anything if we get that. They might just give us some guidance as to, okay, this is not gonna work this way.
When does this go off?
It, it's completely up to the board. I didn't expect the board to vote it tonight unless they had chance to suitably look through it. Um, so we can bring it to the next meeting for you to vote after you've had more time to chew on it, or if you're happy to let it go, we can let it go.
You should know it by now. I don't think later.
Send it out there.
I think right now.
Yeah, just maybe, yeah, send it out.
Yeah.
What was that?
Unversely.
Guaranteed.
Well, I have to our piece in two days, it's all.
Hold on. This can't be able to, trying to speak.
For a while, for a while.
Ten times.
He's the devil. Right then. Yeah, I'm trying.
The only thing that wasn't clear, like, I thought it was great. The only thing that I thought wasn't super clear and it, and maybe intentional is, it sounds like it reads, we kinda wanna hold the, we wanna keep the field, but if you kinda need to let us know, is that kind of?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it basically was the fields here be sacrificed, but we would prefer to have some type of a multi-use field because that came up in the discussions with Bartsman and the Henrys, like in Harpike.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, maybe you could shift it and then they could pick up that for parking. So I didn't wanna limit someone because.
To go through and then they don't have.
Yes, because it would all be a negotiation in the end and would still have to go to the planning. It's not really anything I've paid for it.
But in this proposal, the tennis courts are, are prior to this.
Since we're just putting money into the pickle court, slipping.
But purposely not putting a lot into it.
No, but it's still money that.
It is, it is.
You wouldn't wanna rip off a year.
It's all bigger.
I'm, I'm looking at, I wouldn't let this thing go down because all of a sudden we need that tennis court plan. But I mean, it just has to be reasonable here.
I, I can make that language similar for the fields as is for the tennis courts. So it's, we would like to maintain, to retain these, but, you know, a little to talk.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
I think if we're gonna put it out there, we should put it out there for that. I mean, I agree with you that, I think, I like that if we're gonna retain A and the gym and that, that the court stayed there, because then it becomes sort of a little rec area and that makes sense to me, um, use of the property. But I also think that, you don't know what, we gotta keep the door open, it's a.
Yeah.
But it also might make sense to potential developer. They might consider that an amenity for the tennis courts to be there on the rec.
Right, yeah.
So.
Oh, I think they would.
I feel like let's just.
Tell it both in.
Then you know. Well, that's, you know, you, 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 you better beware. Don't. They were there.
Lot of soundproofing, a lot of sound.
Different malls they need.
Yeah, it is. I think we're, we're ultimately trying to say, so we definitely, none of us know. None of us know.
We don't like to get it out the door. We don't know till I try.
Yeah, I think it should get out the door.
So we, uh, we will take a motion and get this out of joint.
You have a motion? Yeah.
We, to, I, I, listen, I do, I think it's, I mean, it's, and I mean this with love. It's imperfect and it's imperfect, partly for a reason, because we don't have the exact.
We don't.
Yeah, right.
And I mean that with, you know, respectfully.
I'm a numbers person.
I'm not a numbers person.
No, no, we, we, it needs to have the flexibility.
Well, right, you're using, you're putting those options out there so that, I mean, well, someone come with creativity and possibility.
Right.
And you get something that we maybe didn't ever thought of.
And if they come up with something we don't like, we don't do it.
Exactly.
Not, exactly. Move that the select board move forward with the issuance of a press for proposal for housing option that all gates full building B with the changes recommended.
And Miss Canfield second by?
Second.
Is Harrison all those in favor? Uh, it is unanimous.
Do you mind if I just hang out there? Can we get to the beach ticker insert? Cause you just got one little thing there.
You just. Oh, drain layer.
Let's take beach ticker inserts.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, there it is.
I guess not.
Jamie.
Yeah, I saw.
I have one.
I saw. Right here.
Yeah, I saw it, see it?
It's great.
We're gonna put it on some nice, nice paper.
Um, no.
We have the budget for that.
No, it will, it will be on something similar to this because otherwise it's gonna raise the cost of meal in the beach ticker and worth placed in the sticker.
So they will, they will.
Yeah. Two steps.
So this is probably just a little, little show and tell. This is the piece of paper I got from my past film and pasta for my test to get on it together. Oh, yes. That's another whole.
It was all around us, sir.
But.
But you are right here, it's the truth.
Yeah, so there you go, great.
YouTube tomorrow.
Uh, but it's, it's, I think it's, it, it, it's obviously it's about, uh, property taxes.
Probably, yes, it's about.
But it, it's really great. It has F I Qs on the back and it has, you know, everything you wanna know about that particular bill. And I think, you know, it was so timely that I got this when we're reviewing this because it's exactly what Penny accomplished, it's the same thing. There you go, show and tell. Exhibit F.
Billion dollar budget, don't they?
Yes.
So you had a question and then?
No, I just had a question because the sentence that says situat beaches are carry and carry out all beach trackings.
It's all, it's all.
Aren't we really carry and carry out? I thought we kept threatening to be carry and carry out.
Yep.
Each time. Right.
I think that means, I mean, yes, there are, there's repository to put things in, you can put it in, but it's like, you don't leave my crap on the beach.
Oh, agree. I agree with that, but I always thought when we talked about carry and carry out, it was like, we don't have bins.
Right, that's how I turned.
You carry in, you carry out.
But this is what was on that original document I sent by to you that Jim and Sally wrote a year ago.
Yeah.
We want, I know. Okay.
Are we, you know, if it was already there?
All right, could I make just a, an editorial on this thing?
I'm fine with this, Jamie.
I think we should say, we prefer that situat beaches, that, that all beach users carry in and carry out their records. It doesn't mean that, you know, if we have a, a place to put in fine, but that it's our preference that people bring their trash, you know, bring their stuff in and take their trash.
Please.
Okay.
People.
I'm okay with it keeping that way.
Yeah, no, but I, I think it always thought it meant no trash. I think we take, uh, situate creatures or carry and carry out, just say all beach trackies must be removed by the beach user.
Oh, that's good.
Because.
There you go.
There you go.
You do, you know, like we do stuff there, right? So just take out that first one.
Okay.
Are you good?
Perfect.
I am, I'm just gonna reiterate. It's not gonna cost the board to get a brighter white paper. To move that beyond, that's all. The cup feels a little better.
Um, I, I asked for, this is a twenty, I asked for a twenty-four, twenty-four, as long as it wasn't gonna throw a bill on.
They missed that, they don't.
Um, are you okay with the, um, amenities part on the front to the Situate Visitor Center so that if people want?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd rather not.
I love this, this is awesome.
I think we should, I think we should.
This is, this is, this is a million dollars.
Love it.
This is what happens when you let me do this with publisher.
I think we, uh, you did a great job.
Well done. Well done.
Can't check G B C. I was gonna say, literally, you did a.
We put, instead of, this isn't linked to anything, you could put W W W Situate Visitor Center dot com. Right, because this isn't gonna be a link, it's not like, I mean, yes, you can.
It's actually a link in the, in the online version, but you're right, it's not a physical, it's not a physical address. So I would miss that.
Yeah, so it says type of.
That's good.
Kind of site.
Yep, 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 yep.
Um, for cost.
I'm, I'm, yeah.
Um, staples for nine thousand, it was four thousand three hundred and twenty. So I went to my fallback, the, um, Plymouth County Correctional Inn and the Grinch Shop, they were twenty cents each. And then I went to, um, our next fallback, which is South Shore Rota, and they came in at point one nine three each.
Oh, winner.
Right, that.
Winner.
So the South Shore Rota will be printing these if you sew inside.
Winner, winner.
And Nick had already said he's fine with it, so.
Excellent.
He wants extra to have a rep and I think if you want extra to have it like senior center library and maybe.
Right.
Yeah.
The two and in or somewhere else that.
Oh, that'd be much.
This is made timeless, so you can use it year after year without really changing it unless something comes up.
That's pretty cool.
We don't get it.
Or change your rules.
Yeah, well, the stickers are available purchase, obviously, two twelve, twenty twenty-five, so that makes it a timed piece right there.
I can always.
Way to say that differently?
February.
Yeah, February, yeah.
In February? Annually, right?
Annually, February?
I, I don't know.
Or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Okay.
We do that.
That makes it timeless.
If there's any other ever greeting you need today, you can ever read. Excellent. Love it.
Yay.
Well, there's no motion, right? Is there not? No.
You guys are good, I'll go forward with it.
So is this going in with what, with bill? This is going in with this?
Your sticker.
So they, they buy your sticker or go out and then it will be on the counters?
Yeah, so they mail it to you in the sticker. So you're, you're not just getting a silly sticker and a book, you're getting something that's instructive.
Got it.
Helpful.
All right, drain layers renewals. We have a motion, this is on.
Move to approve the renewal of the drain layers license for McDougall Brothers Enterprises, McHecker Contracting Inc., then Riccio Excavation Company.
Second.
Ms. Krieger Marseille, everybody, Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. You get a, this is our seasonal population estimate from the APCC, motion please.
Move to first the twenty twenty-five seasonal estimate for APCC as of July tenth, twenty twenty-five. Our resident population estimate is twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Move, uh, by Ms. Canfield, say, and by Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wow. Twenty-eight and I.
Really, it's really thirty.
I am every year and I was called never to ask.
We've tried.
Done our best.
We've done our best.
We had.
Does it, cause you have a little, you have, or of course not.
A cou- couple of quick ways and one that, um, I really wanna get out there is Sissyomberi is, um, coordinating the arrival this summer of students, um, for grants.
Oh.
And their exchange, and they are very much looking for host families. Uh, the students will have programs all day long, so basically giving them a place to sleep and, you know, a couple of the helps. Um, so if you're interested in, um, helping that out, they were so generous to our students that let's open the, let go up on that, uh, and, and provide that for them. And I also am like.
Who did that content, I'm sorry, who did not add to that?
Uh. It's.
On the website.
Call, call, call the, the select board off, just, yeah, thank you. Um, and the revised Situate Charter has been approved by the state.
Yeah. We must.
Excellent.
Only do it by the power, get enough power, right?
Ugly.
I don't know.
No, snarky.
I do have four responding to one. You have, uh.
No, I've been.
Yeah. Right, you on?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Um. This is a report, you can look at it afterward, I'll just use you the total number. Brand report cards of Situate January twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Total from January one, by the day, all grants, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. The town shares, for so, were supporting that with one thirty-seven, three oh four. And it's across the board, there's everybody in here, there's the Clean Vessel Act, Situate Education Foundation Grant, Mass Electric Vehicle Incentives, Stanton Foundation Capital Grant. So it's really nicely done, and that's a sign of people in our, people working here, looking for the money. Um, Mass Historic Commission, pleased to announce round thirty-one of Mass, Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund Grant Program. So we have a notice on that, uh, application submission deadline March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Awards happening June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I have, um, a couple of things on, uh, from my good friend Brenda.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yes, wherever Brenda wants.
January sixth is Women's Christmas in Ireland, okay. February first is St. Bridges Day, the first day of spring in Ireland, halfway between winter and summer solstice. The monthly meeting for the, it's Situate West Cork. It's five P M. on January fifteenth, and then the trail group at six fifteen at the senior center. Trail retreat is at the town library, large conference room, uh, January twenty-fifth. Um. And, uh, what is it, January, well, we've already talked about that, but if you need the sequence, I have this in big transcripts.
Volun- wants you to, if anyone wants to volunteer for the trail.
Absolutely, yes, and don't look at.
Cause I read that from across the room.
Right, don't look for donations as well. So that's, that's what I have and you already raised it in the, in the, our town administrator's, uh, presentation about the, uh, the community workshop for the historical, uh, resources approach to historic preservation on January twenty-ninth, six thirty to eight thirty in the library to the nation, to the public, all I have.
Great, okay, yeah, no? Uh, approval of meeting, excuse me, approval of meeting events?
Move to, uh, accept the select board minutes for December seventh, twenty-four.
Sorry, I say, uh, Krieger Marseille, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four oh one.
Uh, thank you.
Um, so next on the agenda, you're going to go. So next on the agenda, we are going to go, after read this, into executive session. Uh, and we will not be repeating it, so let me read this. So the chair declares the select board move into executive session. Pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and I declare an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the select board in connection with the matter of shellfish aquaculture. Also on Sunset Road. The chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to consider litigation strategy with respect to the town of Citro, the Willis and others, public sphere court number two four eight three C V zero 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 eight zero zero. Litigation concerning twenty-three Sunset Road. Is that properly?
Second.
No, I can get to move.
Now, you can do the move.
Okay, move that the select board go into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in connection with this matter. The board will not reconvene in open session, so the matter is shellfish aquaculture. Move that the select board move into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to consider litigation strategy with respect to the town Citro versus Willis and others, Plymouth County Superior Court number two four eight three C V zero zero eight zero zero. Litigation concerning twenty-three Sunset Road, and that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. The board will not reconvene in open session. This requires a roll call vote, as a reminder, to set that. Second.
So move by Ms. Harrison, second by.
Second.
Skid a little way, and go to all those.
Hey, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
You're coming.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you all in favor.